For coming, welcome. The January 22nd, 2019 Select Board meeting is now in session. I hope you are all enjoying this weather we're having because it's not going to last. This evening, we're going to start with the Select Board and Town Manager reports. We're mixing things up a little bit. I think we're going to try this for a while. So the Select Board and Town Manager will give their reports, and then we'll have public comment. Unless one of us has a topic not anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting, we'll move on to the discussion of the items in the agenda. These include a board vote on a Class 1 license application. We're going to hear from Emmett Schmarzow, did I pronounce that correctly? Of the State Department of Elder Affairs. He will discuss trends around the state for planning, needs for a new senior and community center, something I think we all feel is very important. We'll hear, then we'll hear an update from the Town Accountant. We'll preview the warrant article for April's annual town meeting. We will hear from Town Council about the use of Memorial Park. And I'm looking for someone, Bill Brown. If he doesn't show for this, we'll have to send him a copy of the video because he's been asking for that for years. So we'll also hear from the Town Manager about the process to address the school committee vacancy, and the board can discuss that. And then we'll hear updates on the goals of this Select Board for this year. So now on to liaison reports. Last week, I started on my left. I'll start to my right with Mr. Halsey.
I'm actually, I have nothing to report today.
Okay. Yes, so I have a few things to report. I went to the Sierra Club Climate Change Summit about a week ago. They're, at the state level, they're discussing a potential fracked gas pipeline that would be built possibly in 2020. There's some question as to the benefit or not of that to the state. So if you want more information on that, I suggest you visit sierraclub.org. They emphasize that the future is electric, and there's a, so the big takeaway for me was that we need to be working closely with RMLD on ways to make the community more green. And in line with that, there is actually a state initiative called the Green Communities Division. And they provide grants, technical assistance, local support from regional coordinators to help municipalities reduce energy use and costs. So Bedford actually has worked towards greening their entire town fleet. So it's actually saving them a bit of money there. So again, another great opportunity to partner with RMLD. At the ZBA meeting on January 16th, there was an issue before the board regarding Lincoln Prescott. The building was built differing from the original plans. It was off by one foot on one side and two feet on another, meaning it was closer to the sidewalk. This was only, this was recently caught by town staff, and the ZBA determined that it was considered an insubstantial change. They were asked with whether it was a substantial or insubstantial change. There was extensive discussion from residents on this, and they've raised numerous concerns. The balconies will now overhang from the sidewalks. There is less space for snow removal. There's falling snow and ice concerns for pedestrians, since it's right near the train station especially. And line of sight concerns were also raised. So there's two sides of this, the ZBA side, which is now concluded, and the town's involvement. So I've asked the Chair to put this on the agenda for next meeting because there was a lot of resident concern. But it's important to note that that particular agenda item is not about the ZBA's actions. It's about the town's involvement to this point. And so for those watching that are concerned about that, the Select Board does not have the authority to change their determinations. So I also went to the MMA, Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Conference. Lot of great sessions, wonderful networking to hear what other towns are doing, but I'll focus on just one since I know my colleagues went as well. There was one on parliamentary procedures, and this one was great. There were several key takeaways here. They emphasized, as our own Town Council have said, not to follow Robert's rules. It's easy to get bogged down with them, and they can be abused. The other big one was regarding public comment. So I learned that the board cannot engage during public comment. It's a violation of open meeting law because those issues are not on the agenda. The most we can do is direct to additional resources or information, or we can say we'll consider it for a future agenda. They also suggested defining public comment to be limited to only issues that pertain to subjects under our jurisdiction. They also suggested we define rules for participation, including length, the fact there's no derogatory comments, no swearing, et cetera. And they encouraged us to be available outside of meetings, but I think most of us do that anyway. And they also encouraged parliamentary training for all board members, especially those that are new, so that everyone operates under the same guidelines. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Barry?
So I also attended the ZBA meeting with Vanessa, as I am liaison to the ZBA. I am not going to comment on the decision or the appropriateness of the decision because I think that that, this board has sort of gotten in trouble in the past when we sort of stray out of our lane. However, at that meeting, you know, as Vanessa said, there were some questions about sort of the safety and safety concerns. So at that meeting, it sort of begs some questions for me. And also, I too, I think we're on the same page, I did also request an agenda item for our next meeting on this. And so for me, the questions really become, obviously around this project specifically. I want to learn what's the process for town inspecting, you know, in this particular, the foundation, before the major work occurred? How was it missed? What's the fact pattern? What's the timeline? Also, what actions can we take to deal with some of the concerns that were raised? Specifically, there was the overhangs, but also because the building is put out forward, people turning from Prescott Street onto Lincoln Street, you know, is that, is that view sort of impinged by that? I'd like to know that because to me, that's a safety concern. You know, what actions do we take or will we take to enforce what's already in the order of conditions, especially around parking, start times, maintenance of the area once they're done, including leveraging fines if things, if people are out of compliance? What can we do to limit construction parking on that site? It is right by the train station, and it is a busy time. The other thing that I also want to do, because I think really talk about, is because this is the first project out of the gate, and we do have a number of other projects coming, you know, coming online. I noticed that there's a fence around the post office. That generally means that there's something going to be happening soon. They're already moving dirt around at Sunoco Station. So Bob, I would like to, as part of that agenda item, just to have perhaps you or Jean talk about, do we have the resources to effectively monitor and force the projects that already are in the pipeline? You know, do we have the right resources? Do we, if not, do we need more? What do we need to do that? And then also, what I'd like to talk about, or have, and perhaps this, you know, this might require inviting in our friends at ZBA and also CPDC. Is there a list of best practices that the town can employ for already permitted projects or new projects coming down the pike, so that neighbors have an expectation of sort of what can be expected? Now, obviously, our economic development agenda is incredibly important, but also so is the, you know, so is the health and safety and wellness of a lot of the people in the neighborhoods where these projects are going to be built. And so, you know, we heard from, you know, the ZBA voted a certain way. We're not going to talk about that, but there's a lot of comment from people who say, well, the building department, you know, makes me move something when my deck's not right. So we need to make sure that people are playing on a level playing field, that, you know, that we have the confidence of folks, that we're not just turning a blind eye, maybe because there's a big project or a developer, when we treat neighbors the same way. So those, I know what it's going to be on the agenda. Those are the things I'd like to kind of focus on. So I also attended, we were well represented in the MMA meeting. I attended a couple of workshops. The ones I attended, I thought that I got the most out of was a workshop on how to support your downtown businesses. And what was incredible about that is that to a town, everybody seems to believe and are doing that essentially the way you support your downtown businesses is that you have people living and working in the downtown. So a lot of the towns that had presented and talked about downtown businesses by having, like what we did, 40R, that I thought was really interesting, and I know it kind of said, it kind of lines up with some of the things we're doing, is that all the towns that presented also have very strong art and cultural organizations that they're employing in the downtown, whether that be theaters, performing arts center, galleries. They've all sort of employed sort of the creative economy to their downtown. And, you know, we have a newly formed group, Arts Reading, that's working to creating a cultural district downtown. That is actually not an outlier. That is something that a lot of towns have looked at. So I thought that that was great, that we're not the only one. The other thing that I want to report on at the MMA, I sort of bumped into by accident our Lieutenant Governor. And when I say bumped into, I mean bumped into. I was reading something that I took away from a table and not looking where I was going, and I walked right into her. And so I used that opportunity to kind of talk about Reading and talk about some of the things that we had done in economic development when Jay Ash was here, and asked her if she could set up a meeting with sort of the person who's going to replace Jay. And she said, well, you know, he's still kind of getting on board. Would you mind if I come? And I said, I don't think we'd mind Lieutenant Governor if you come. So she gave us her staff card and invited us to call, and so I think we should think about sort of how we want to entertain the Lieutenant Governor, what we want to show her, and what we want to ask her for, more importantly.
You have to entertain her?
I think if we, I think in the interest, we can get her a cup of coffee.
Sorry, Vanessa.
Yeah. So the other thing I'm working with Vanessa on, as you recall, in November, we did, we set up an ad hoc committee to look at creating some, a human rights advisory board. So we, Vanessa and I have sent out invitations to folks that we're inviting. We're still waiting to hear from a couple of people. I think by our next meeting, Vanessa, I think we can safely say that we'll be able to announce who's on the committee and perhaps have a first meeting scheduled. So I just didn't want people to think about, you know, that that fell down by the wayside. Also, many of us attended the Martin Luther, annual Martin Luther King ceremony yesterday at the high school. Incredible job by H.RAC in setting up this wonderful event. There was, there were poems and songs and singing, and just, it was very inspirational. The fact that it was 90 degrees did not impact the crowd. There was still a ton of people there, and it was a great turnout. And finally, Mr. Chair, I want to, I want to give a shout out and a recognition to one of our residents, Teresa Wiggins, who is the owner of Village Parenting. Teresa has volunteered her own time to basically have parents or caregivers of children sign a caregiver pledge. And that basically, the pledge states that they will talk to their children about inclusion, about acceptance, and then when they sign the pledge, she is going to basically provide a ton of resources to help people have those conversations with their children. Remember, the Reading Public Schools do a tremendous job in sort of in their curriculum. But let's face it, the kids don't get there until they're five years old, and they're only there seven hours a day. It really begins at home, and a lot of people want to have these conversations with their kids, but they just don't know where to start. So Teresa, through Village Parenting, has provided a whole level of resources to help people guide those conversations with their kids, young kids. And there's a list of books that can be read for young kids all the way up to high school. The way you'll access that, Village Parenting on Facebook, you'll see the caregiver pledge. I think well over 100 parents or caregivers have signed it. The more the merrier, because I think that, you know, as we struggle through some of these issues, and we're going to have the ad hoc committee, we really, this stuff really begins at home. And so I want to just thank her for doing that. She's not charging any money for this, but it's a great resource, and I want to encourage people to look that up. And if you have kids that you're caring for in Reading, you know, please consider signing that pledge. That's all I have. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Vanessa just indicated she forgot one thing.
I have one more. Barry, thanks for bringing that up. I think it's a wonderful idea. I signed it and committed to talking to my kids about it, so thank you for recognizing her. One of the things I, that recently came up, that we've all presumably been following is the government shutdown, and we've been hearing stories about how there are members of the community that are struggling during this time. So is it possible, I know that there's precedent, for us to create a program whereby residents who are furloughed or contractors with the federal government be granted leniency in paying local bills, whether it's water or property taxes, perhaps partnering with RMLD? I know it's not on the agenda, it could fall under 48 hours, but I wanted to mention that. There's numerous private organizations and nonprofits that are working to help these individuals, but I think this would be a nice way to help those in our community that are struggling with this right now.
Thank you, thank you, Vanessa. Obviously, we can't discuss that, but this meeting, but we can, you can talk with Bob.
I was going to say, I'll connect with Bob.
And perhaps, that's a nice thing. So just for the Chair report, I wanted to let you all know and be open about the fact that both Barry and I have been speaking with the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee and Bob, educating ourselves on the process of replacing the school vacancy left by Sherri Vandenecker. Those conversations were very friendly, pleasant, and I personally learned a lot about the process, which we will discuss, which Bob's going to go over later this evening. I too, on Friday and Saturday, attended the MMA's annual meeting in Boston. It's my first one, and I have to tell you, I was a little hesitant to go. I went, and it was fantastic. They really presented some sessions that are at the forefront of innovative ideas to towns and cities, and they're a resource that I think we could use more often. The sessions, I just want to list four of the sessions that I went to, and each one sort of generated some ideas that I thought might be helpful and useful for town in Reading. The first one was about the opioid epidemic, opioid epidemic, and it was gripping, to say the least. A doctor from Western Massachusetts presented on the opioid epidemic, things you can do for, as preventative measures, but also focusing on recovery and things that are needed for recovery. And so on this topic, I hope to share the information with John, you're still our liaison to our CASA.
Oh, yeah. Board meeting this week.
Yep, and meet with Erica, maybe the three of us. We could meet with Erica McNamara, and I could sort of a brain dump on what I learned. Then there was a session on how to use zoning to encourage aging in place, which was very interesting. And I'll talk to Bob about, and perhaps the Bylaw Committee, about what I learned there. The third one was how to save money when buying supplies and services. Now, that sounds very boring, but I found it, it turned out to be pretty, pretty interesting. There was some good advice. I assume Bob's probably doing all this already, but it never hurts to share what I've learned there. And then the last one was tips for building age-friendly communities. And all of this stuff screams for a community center, age center, to bring the, elder center to bring the youth and elders of the community together more. So I'll be discussing that more with Bob and the Council on Aging and all the key players So yesterday morning, I, like Barry and Vanessa, attended the M.M.A. celebration of the high school. I won't repeat what they said, but the music was fantastic, and they had quotes from Martin Luther, Dr. Martin Luther King throughout the program, which were very inspiring. Lastly, as the board's liaison to the Lincoln Prescott Street site, I learned that there's, continues to be this problem of construction worker vehicles parking on the street, which is in violation of the ZBA permit. And many of you may know that I've been working on this since the summertime and hope to make some more progress in the time to come. I've also been working on this with the Assistant Town Manager and Ms. Alvarado, because, why am I calling people by Ms.? With Vanessa and who's the liaison to our police and the ZBA, so it's a good fit. You have the liaison to the development, liaison to ZBA and their permit, and the I've also reached out again to one of the developers to see when they can get a sign up to notify Reading residents about next day's street closures, so that residents can plan for a street closure during rush hour. I'd like to ask the rest of the board if they think it would be helpful at this point to invite the developers and construction company to our next board meeting to discuss the ongoing concerns of our constituents, or if you think we should just keep working, working right out of the way that we have been doing. So that's a question about an agenda, which we can chew on during the meeting, and at the end of the meeting, we can see whether it would be a good idea or not. Okay? Okay? So I, I'm not, I'm asking you because I don't really feel strongly about it yet. So now over to Bob for the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be quick. First, to talk about the snow. I understand now why old people like Florida. I always wondered when I was a kid. We used 600 tons of salt over the weekend. It seemed like an awful lot to me. One of the real challenges that the weather presented, and probably all of us as homeowners ran into the same issue, is the forecast and what really happened were quite different and constantly changed. On Sunday morning, the forecast was it would start to rain, which it did, and it would go into the 40s. Instead, it plunged down to 15. Don't know why. So one of the challenges the town had in doing its snow removal was it had done a first pass, it had started to do the second pass, and it went right down to pavement on the main roads, which it did. Normally, it would then jump to the side streets to clean them up, but the main roads started to freeze, and cars started to slip off them. So they had to suddenly retool, go down to the garage and get all the sand and more ice, more salt out. So that took an enormous amount of time to make the main road safe before they could even get to the side streets. So that was, one of the challenges was really just the volatility in the weather. I have to be very thankful and appreciative that more than any storm I can remember, we got more thank yous from residents. We got a few complaints, but we got more thank yous, and that really means a lot because for folks that don't know, the same crew was out there the whole time. We don't have backup crews and nighttime crews. During the weekend, there were three water main breaks. The same people that plow snow go out and fix water mains, which is another interruption to the snow. So it really does mean a lot after someone's work for 30 hours in a row to get a thank you, and I really do appreciate that. For those that don't know, we had an active fire on Temple Street today, right across from Parker. There were no injuries. There was some damage. Certainly, it was in a rear deck. It was a three-alarm fire. In addition to thanking the Reading Public Safety Departments for being out in very difficult conditions, fire crews from Wakefield, Wolverne, Wilmington, Stonem, Burlington, Lynnfield, and Melrose also responded. And just so you're aware, they don't necessarily all come to the scene, but they have, we have two fire stations that need to be backed up if all our firefighters are on a scene. So I know that was a very tough condition. You can only imagine how cold it was. Again, as I have heard, there were no injuries. A lot of streets were closed. They reopen now. The issue of furloughed federal workers did come up late last week, so I can talk about it from my perspective and do directly. And I'll just leave one to details if you wish at another meeting. I have heard that there are four local banks who are very interested and are already offering programs to help if you're a customer of theirs. So for any of the furloughed workers that's having any kind of financial difficulty, paying a property tax bill, whatever it is, the banks are working with them. And I got a list of the four, and I got it secondhand, so I really feel more comfortable not mentioning names, but it's four of the largest banks in town. I met briefly last week with Senator Lewis and a couple of members of his staff. He thought the meeting where the group came in and met the Select Board was really worthwhile and would like to do it again next fall. So just throw that out for now. Lastly, I just wanted to remind the board, you're posted four times in the next week or so for various things. Thursday, the 24th, you're posted at 7:00 for a school committee budget meeting. On the 28th, Monday, at 7:30 a.m., Vanessa and John Halsey are posted as Capitol and Oakland Road, two different subcommittees, to meet with me. That night, at 7:00 at night, you're posted again to attend a school committee budget meeting. And then on the 31st, Andy and Dan are both posted at 7:00. That's a Thursday, I believe, to meet as a policy subcommittee again with me. So you have four meetings you're posting.
That date may change. I got a different date from Dan, but.
Okay. Slide us out. And that's, thank you.
Thank you for your availability on all those subcommittee meetings.
Yeah. Especially at 7:00 in the morning.
Ours is at 7:30.
Yes, John?
I just, in light of, it kind of slipped out of my, you know, out of my mind, but I normally make a run to the Boston Food Bank, bringing things back here, and I was advised by the people that run the Boston Food Bank, relative to government employees, should they have any need, all they need to do is stop in. The Food Bank is prepared to help them. Won't be necessary for the normal process that people would go through to be able to register and utilize it, given the circumstances. They feel like they're in a good spot to help, you know, any, any Reading resident who is affected by the government shutdown and are happy to help the Food Bank. So I wanted to say that out loud and, you know, on TV and make sure that it's clear that they're quite happy to help and accommodate anybody's needs in that regard, so.
So the question is, how can you get the word out? I know there'll be a huge viewership for this meeting, but, you know, how can we amplify what you just said?
Well, you know, I'm guessing that's something that we've got the media here, and, you know, they can, that can be a quick posting, public service posting in the papers, and I'm sure that the patch would be, even though I know he's busy tonight in Stonem, he's covering a lot of different towns. I can make a quick call to him and let him know, and it'll get it, we'll get it posted, you know, quickly enough, I think, so.
I think that's a great idea.
Is this something that we can, whereas the town can list, create a list of the various services that are available here locally? If it's the Food Bank, if it's the local banks that are doing it, if we can confirm those, and add that on our website so that should people come looking for assistance from the town, there's a snapshot view of what, and then it's up to them to reach out more broadly for specific resources.
Yeah, we could certainly post what we know, but I'm not sure what we know is going to be thorough. Do the best we can.
We can add that disclaimer. That's okay. Thank you.
All right. We should probably move on because we're already behind schedule. If, so now we're entering public comment. How many people would like to speak this evening? If you can see, okay. So just, you know, just comments to the entire board, from what we've learned through Vanessa. We will remain steely eyed and silent.
You could say thank you.
Yeah, but we will probably say thank you, and if you bring up something that's within our jurisdiction that we plan to discuss this evening, I'll just mention we're going to discuss that later, and I hope you can join us for that. So with that, public comment.
Nancy, Dr. Postree. For the agenda item, the State Department of Elder Affairs, when you do discuss it, could you please clarify for me whether or not that person was invited by the town, by the Select Board, or by both? Then the other comment, as I mentioned last month, I'm going to mention again this month, that the Select Board owns pesticide regulations, and they've owned them since the middle of 2017. It's now 2019. I would hate to see another spring come without the regulations putting to effect. I would hate to see another spring come without the regulations putting to effect. Our former town tree warden, Pete, actually discouraged any testing written into the regulations because of the half-lives of certain compounds and pesticides. I'm not an expert on that, but he was. So I would again just urge you to act on your regulations. Thank you.
I'm biting my tongue because I'm the liaison to the Board of Health. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I've had Angela.
Oh, couldn't see, couldn't see your hand. Angela?
Thank you, Angela Benda, 10 Orchard Park Drive. I didn't know it's all trying to edit them to be quick. As 10 annual town meetings approaching, warrant articles and projects are being discussed, I'm here to add a few comments about discussions regarding the Birch Meadow Master Plan proposed, possible proposed field lighting. At the December 4th, 2018, select board meeting, Gene Delius made a presentation on the Recreation Department and showed how revenues have increased steadily over the years. What wasn't shown in that presentation was financial information showing that expenses have also increased over the years at about the same rate. I have information from a public records request and spreadsheets that I got from Chair Nance. The final amount transferred to free cash from the Recreation Revolving Fund has been about $125,000, as was stated at the meeting. However, this money has historically been used to offset recreation wages, permanent staff not paid for through the revolving fund. And I'll just read from the last town warrant that says Recreation Division, expenses are self-funded by fees that utilize a revolving fund and are not powered of this budget. Wages, as shown below, are part of the general fund budget, but a surplus of fees at year end typically repays all or most of the funds to the, most of these funds to the general fund. Going back through warrants, that is generally what is said that excess funds go back to offset permanent staff. The final amount, in 2016, there was approximately $4,000 turned over to free cash that did not offset the recreation staff. In 2018, that number was about $17,000. And the town does state in annual budgets and elsewhere that the Recreation Department is self-funding and it has relied upon this transfer of funds to do so. Several scenarios were given at town meeting in 2014 to give an idea of what increased usage for field lights and increased fees might yield to the town. And I'll read this from the April 2015 report, the warrant. It says, "From a cost standpoint, it should be noted upfront that the recreation is nonprofit seeking enterprise. Revolving funds are meant to draw on just and not revenue to reason we pay for cost. Recreation expenses are paid directly by the revolving fund during the year and fiscal year end." They were, at that time, returning about $75,000 to $100,000 to the general fund in amount purposely below remaining wages and benefit costs to the town. On the financial side, selling project debt for 10 years will add proximal interest cost. The addition of field available, increased field hours purchased by at least 15%. Recreation Committee has already discussed the raising of fees to help this. It is not difficult to see that the project, this project paying for the extra $15,000 costs described above. And so the estimate varied slightly on how much the fees would go up, how much participation, but $15,000 increased revenue was about what was estimated for that. A narrative has been put forth, it was put forth in 2014 and it's been put forth again, that the field lighting project could pay for itself in 10 years, in 10 years. And it was even stated at the 2012 December 4th meeting that it could pay for itself in seven or eight years. There is, to my knowledge, no scenario that has been put forth in writing by the town where the cost of spending $1.4 million on the field lighting would be recovered in 10 years or seven or eight, as was suggested verbally at the December 4th meeting. Citizens of Redding just voted for a $4.3 million override. And while 5% of the override was earmarked for capital projects, which is about $215,000, neighbors and friends I've spoken to have been surprised to hear that money, the override money, might be used for field lighting projects. Most importantly, this project needs to be considered along with other deferred projects, other recreational needs. The elementary school project and the post senior center and the financial information about it needs to be transparent and complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Angela.
Okay.
Yes, hi.
Hi, regarding concerns.
Oh, your name?
Jean Thomas, it's Arlington Street. Regarding concerns for what has been called Lincoln Prescott, concerns which I will be deferring until next week. Thank you for that opportunity. I just want to note that the proper name that the developer puts forward is the Metropolitan at Redding Station, a luxury apartment building. So that rather than Redding Village, that be acknowledged, it's truly the Metropolitan at Redding Station.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Yes, you're back.
Mr. Chairman, Tony DeRizzo, 130 John Street. I'm a little confused right now. Will there be possibilities for public comment later on in the evening relating to each discussion object, item? Or should all public comments be done now?
I think there's many ways to do this, but I've, previous chair have encouraged me to have the comments done now. But I'll go at the fill of the board on this when we get to those topics. But state it now.
My concern is about the easement on Simmons Way. Reading through the document, it looks like we would be selling the easement for $1. It seems to make no sense to me for the town to take a valuable asset and just sell it for a dollar when the petitioner is looking to make 1.3 million. And I would say that some sort of remuneration should be paid to the town for the easement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Seeing none. We will get right into the Class 1 application. Bob?
Thanks. I'll turn it right over to Brad.
My name is Brad Leighton. I'm the attorney here on behalf of Prime Motors, 128. We're filed an application for a Class 1 license for the sale of new motor vehicles. This is the location, 8898 Marcus Brook Drive, common location of the apartment facility. There's no physical change being proposed as a consequence. I'm just seeing, I'm dealing with John Russell, who is associate general counsel of Prime Motors. David Rosenburg cannot be here at Soffe's, the manager of the facility. The primary activity is, of course, is each sale of license, even though new vehicles are sold as part of that activity. The company has provided as required by law in this application a copy of the compensation, a certificate of insurance coverage. One of the requirements that we show that we have either available on site, a complete repair facility, or a access to a repair facility. There is one year now and that will continue, which functions well, which is quite adequate. No physical changes being proposed to the facility itself. It's really just a change of the ownership and management. I also provided to the town manager a copy of the dealership license agreement with Honda, American Honda Motor Company. That would be signed when and after Class 1 license is issued. I also provided a copy of a lease to show site control and a letter of intent dealing with that site control. So the facility is available. I provided to Prime Motors a copy of the Board of Health, Upplication Oil Regulations, and they're aware of that, will abide by that. Also, a copy of the select board's automobile sale policies, they'll also abide by that. So they're fully conversant in those requirements. We're more than happy, any questions you may have, we think we, by submissions, have met the requirements required by section. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Bob?
And just a comment on the town side. The town has reviewed all of Brad's submissions. They're in order as he pointed out. I think one of the keys is there's no physical changes. So our focus was more on the personnel and the public safety has cleared all that. So we see no reason a license application shouldn't be approved.
Thank you. Gary, did you? No, I'm good. You're good. Okay.
I have a motion.
You have a motion?
Move that select board approve the new Class 1 license as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Jean will come up and introduce it.
Oh, and to answer an earlier question from the, during public comment, the board did not invite the State Department of Elder Affairs to come visit.
David.
How did they get it? I believe they invited themselves.
Okay.
They offered.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. Jean Delius, Assistant Town Manager. I'm very pleased tonight to have, excuse me, Jane Burns with me. She's the Human and Elder Services Administrator. And Jane and I, together with other staff in public services, have been working for several months now on a number of things related to both the senior center and the broader question of whether or not we need a, some other type of facility to meet the needs of both the seniors and the youth of the town. And I've been working very closely with Jenna Fiorenti, the Recreation Administrator. And we've gone around to a few different towns and looked at different models. So we've been working on this for a while. It is a goal, one of the identified goals that this board passed back in December, to explore the possibility of a combined center. And so as Jane and I were meeting and discussing this, we thought a logical next step would be to invite someone from the state. Our community partner is Emmett Schmarzo. Emmett is the Program Manager for Councils on Aging and Senior Centers at the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs. And so we're very pleased to have Emmett here tonight to share with us his experience and expertise in this area. And so I'd just like to welcome him and ask him to come on up.
Should I stand or?
Whatever your.
I prefer, I stand at work, so I'll just.
All right. That's fine. Have a seat.
Thank you. I work with Councils on Aging, background actually of environmental design. In grad school, I did research with elders in Rensselaer County, New York. And I was lucky enough to find a job with Commonwealth because it turns out that when I actually left grad school, virtually nobody knew what elders were. So it was fairly easy to get a job because nobody had been doing any research on elders. So it was good. So that was 43 years ago. And since then, I have watched communities grow, change, become what they want to be, but what they don't, what we don't know, what I'm in the business of, is this little chart here. And I've got some extras here. I guess everybody's a friend can have and others, if you're interested. This is a chart I give to people when I do training. I do a lot of board training, I do grant training. I've done dozens and dozens of times all around the Commonwealth. And why I'm presenting this, it's because, in particular, because of concern about seniors, you know, kids. Well, the issue here that you can't see necessarily very well, and I humbly apologize, but basically when we take the 2010 to 2030 census, okay, this is a very important thing because the boomers became boomers of age and I am one of them. So what happens here, why this is important is because you've got to look at the community, what it's going to look like basically in 2030, 2040, 2050. It sounds like, whoa, it's a long time away. And I think it's like tomorrow. So what happens here is the under 20 population during 2010 to 20, 2030, we had a growth of maybe 30,000 in the Commonwealth. That's all. Okay? And then the next group, the 20 to 39, same period, maybe 5,000, maybe level. So so far, so far, we've covered under 20 to under 40. We've got virtually, you know, this minuscule population. So the next one is 40 to 59. What does this show? It drops 300,000 people in this timeframe. Those people who were born, the boomers, et cetera, the Massachusetts lost 300,000 people of that age.
Excuse me. I just wanted to clarify. You say we've lost it.
In the decrease.
But but the loss hasn't happened yet.
Well, this is, this is, this is where it's going to be.
Right. That's where we're moving to.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. The next, but the green box, the increase, 60 to 79, let's hear it for 60, okay, in this, in this group, and least increase of 80 plus. So what does this mean? Well, when I, when I try to do this and present here, I let other people talk and I normally talk for two and a half hours straight, so I just want you to know in advance, I don't have that time. But basically, you know, who is going to do the caregiving? That's the biggest message I'm probably going to give you tonight. My mother died from Alzheimer's. I looked at who did the caregiving. My father nearly died taking care of her. So was she, did she go to a senior center? Sure did. And as long as she was able to be reasonably capable, that she had to be at home, it was, it was the stress that would kill my father, to be perfectly honest. This is not one story. There are dozens of them. Who is in effect going to be taking care of people in the community? So when you're looking at a senior center, now, a senior center, it's, I mean, I want to say it's a home away from home. Because people go to senior centers because it is a home away from home. That, most people will say they go to senior center because their people understand what circumstance I'm in. Are they going to cut their, wonderful tour of the senior center. Apparently, the last time I was here was probably 30 years ago. At least I knew it was, it was, I didn't know what it was now. It's a phenomenal thing. Every single senior center in Massachusetts, I've been in virtually all of them, is too small. There is only one town in Massachusetts that has a senior center that will actually last through this time period. That's Western Mass, Town Irving, and they built 6,000 square feet for 400 seniors. That is the only one in the state that actually will be built for, with this time period. What we're looking at now is a population growth. Us, you know, people who are in, basically, maybe boomers, 2030, it's going to grow. It's not going to drop at all. Something weird happening, that's it, the story is. So why did I bring this up? What are you going to do in a senior center? Well, is it a home away from home? I think a lot of people would say it. Do you want to have supportive day? Now, I know some of the report earlier talked about mental health, physical. Mental health is sort of like, if you're taking care of somebody and your stress is unbelievable, you're going to need a place to be, de-stress, which is why maybe when you go to a senior center, you have supportive day programs. If you were to go to, say, Peabody, then they were one of the cities that did it first, you know, a long time ago. And then when they, they added, their, their building was originally, I think, 32,000 square feet for 8,500 seniors. You can do the math about how many is per senior that works. And then they built about maybe four years ago room to have another, for 20 people to come. And, and in one site, and you're talking about what's called supportive daycare and adult daycare. You can forget all this stuff, which is simply to say, supportive day means you have, come in there and it's somebody who's just there and you do, you know, different kinds of things that go in a senior center. People want exercise, they like to do that. If it's adult day, it's a medical model, meaning there's a nurse. Other than that, there's no real difference. I'm simply saying is, when you are stressed, the stress of caregiving is phenomenal. I don't, maybe I should show, show of hands, when you, when you've done the caregiving, you say, where's my break? And the answer is, there isn't one. Right? So you're, when you're looking at a senior center, it's really what do you want, how do you want to have the senior? How does the community really look to you? Because you're going to need that support. It's like a speech, but I'm sorry, that's what, that's what it is. Okay? I'm going to try to be real brief. I love this thing. It's happened with Western Mass years ago. I'll read it. It says, "Judy, do you see that elderly couple down at the other end of the counter?" And she looks this way and she says, "Yeah, what about them?" And he says, And he says, I was just thinking, that's probably what you or I will look like about 10 years from now. And she turns back to him and says, you do realize it's a mirror at the other end of the counter? Right? Because this is what it looks like. And and so of the things, I, I, I'm glad to be here, but normally, I'm not somebody who gets into design, I'm literally somebody who says, look, these are the issues, I'm going to go look at the bigger issues. I will say this, I don't mind being, it's not a matter of being blunt, it's like, there are no senior centers in the Commonwealth that have a youth programs other than perhaps maybe at a holiday, you know, with a sing-along. It doesn't happen. Elders do not want to go where kids are. I'm sorry, I'm telling you that, you can think all the other mean things that might be part of my life, but it doesn't happen. If you were to go, as I did, well, this is about 15 years, the town of Belmont, it took them 40 years to build a senior center. Am I making this up? And I went to the meeting Sunday, 300 people showing up, no press. You know why no press? Because the town didn't want it. But 300 seniors showed up. Right? So what happens is, is that you have now got a situation in which people have made it clear, we don't want our grandchildren, we already raised them. We already, that's it. So I know you're thinking about it as, as, as introduced before. It doesn't happen anywhere in Massachusetts. I just want to say it, I don't want to say like, you're wrong, I'm going to simply say, once you visit four or five centers, I'd be happy to recommend them, I brought some similar size, I got some good data and stuff, but just talk to them. You're not going to see your kids there. Okay? Other things along this way. Um, because the demographics, I don't want to drive you nuts on the demographics, I really have, I, I had some material, and I do have the material here, which I was working on today. At work, our office was closed theoretically because there was no heat, it still wasn't warm enough to me, but whatever. What I would like to say is that I would love, I'd love to recommend, if there are people, four or five or six people, whether on the COA board or some, you know, I think the COA board probably is a really good thing, to simply say, let's go to a handful of senior centers. I'd be delighted to recommend them. There are some that are virtually identical in size, in fact, to yours, and Walpole, two weeks ago, this is interesting, they're almost identical, there's six seniors different from the, from the last 2010 census. So the place holds 100, 300 people showed up. Okay? And and it, it turns out that when they were in the Florley, which was a, which was a school cafeteria, those kind of things. So they went from 30 a day to 130 a day in two weeks, every day. It's like, this is, people want opportunity. And when you build a place like theirs, which is just open and a half a dozen people go to there and say, what are we doing here? Well, among other things, now, I noticed there is a computer, small computer lab, but you know, I went to another place in Milton, I used to live in Milton, and and there were 25 people who'd come, and after a while, man, nobody started coming. Right? So it's like, so what are people going to do when they come to a senior center? I'm going to tell you one thing that you won't pick up on the stats readily, and that's this, people like fitness stuff. They really do. They want to do something, whether it's aerobics, whether, it doesn't matter, because people will go, people who engage in fitness are five, more than five times as likely to become volunteers. That's really important, because you're going to need volunteers, because you're not going to have the money for this stuff. Just take my word for this thing. Okay? But people want those opportunities, and whatever it is, if you view a senior center as a place of opportunity, it's not a community center. We tried, I used to work in community center, I was in high school, doing stuff in Dartmouth, Mass. It's like, it's around there, but somebody has to own it. If you don't own it, it doesn't happen. If somebody doesn't believe in it, it doesn't happen. I'm giving you the common sense things, I've had this for a long time, I'm not bragging about it, simply saying, that's what it is. Okay? So in terms, in terms of what to say, I, I'm very willing to keep, keep my comments brief about, about this, but I would say this, you've got half a dozen people go, I'd be happy to name centers that are all virtually identical. I know one of them, you were looking at Natick. Right? Well, look at Needham, almost identical. Here's two of them, and say, what works, what doesn't work. And Needham, and Natick put in this large thing, it's like a 16 mile, a 16, 1/16 mile track around there. But you know what? It's like, that's the kid, I mean, the seniors might be walking on it, which is nice, but you don't, you don't mix people, people want to feel that they go to the senior center. And it's like, they're, they're with people who they love, and know, or respect, or just appreciate. That's what happens. Because it is a home away from home. And it does not, it has nothing to do with aging, it has everything to do with understanding and opportunities. And I think the business of providing opportunities, which is what we underwrite at Elder Affairs, that's the program I oversee for 350 cities and towns, it's like, we help underwrite that stuff. Are we covering ukuleles? No. Are we covering a whole lot of other things? Yes. But that means, but it's really, you're a town making decisions. And I love being in a position to give other people money and, and, and get credit to the other people, because that's, that's just fine, because I get to see all the balls and so, that's pretty cool. So I, I really do want to keep it brief only, but I'd be more than happy to, I mean, I could, I really can talk for a long time, but I simply want to make it clear that somebody's got to own it, somebody's got to believe in it, it's not, whether it's going to be in town, I don't know. But I will tell you this, people who drive, they'll drive anywhere. You go, anybody here familiar with duplicate bridge by any chance? Anybody know? All right, yeah, hey, that's good. Okay? In the town of Freetown, there are 60 people who show up every other week to do duplicate bridge. In Freetown, does anybody know where Freetown is?
Oh, whoever.
Oh, a couple people, that's good. But I mean, the point is, if it's got something that interests people, they go. And that's why 60 people every other week go to Freetown. I would think, well, my father was a bridge player, and that's how I know that people were doing it. So people will go where it meets their needs, and if it means following a fitness instructor from town A to town B to town C, because she's a good, or he's a good instructor, they'll do it. They will go where it meets their needs. So you might be thinking, put yourself in check, sir.
So.
I can keep going.
No, this is great, I could listen all night. So a couple of things. We can't be the only town struggling, so.
No, every town.
Every town is struggling. So we've looked at opportunities, like for one of the, an example, we're looking at in terms of partnering with other towns on maybe, you know, a DPW garage. Do you know of any efforts in town where, because you, you, you know, you've been to every single one of them, have there been efforts or discussions about, because I don't think we can, you know, 6,000 square foot facility in Reading, when Wakefield is struggling with the same thing, have you seen any efforts where towns have gotten together and just said, you know what, we have the same demographic, we have the same issues, let's all pitch in, build one? Because you said people will travel.
They do.
Or maybe people will build a couple of different ones, but the Reading one deals with fitness, the Wakefield one, you know, where you kind of, where you'll have maybe, where it's spread out? Or are we?
You vote the town, because I, I look at a little fortune of towns, right? It turns out that in the city of Weymouth, the city known as, the, the town known as the city of Weymouth, or city known as Town of Weymouth, they keep playing around, they have 28 different communities come to the senior center for their programs. 28, recorded, right? And it's like, because one place has it, they're going to go where people have, because what I said two minutes ago, somebody has to own it, because you're going to go into the center and say, look, we're really going, we're going to have great stuff with, with art, and a nice little, nice little place, but I mean, they might go there for the art, but they're going to go to some other place, because as long as they can drive, they'll go. So I don't, I don't see this is, there's, that doesn't exist. Well, I will say, the closest that came to it, when I mentioned the town of Irving before, it's because the other towns have nothing, so they are coming to the town of Irving. But in terms of doing, Town of Deerfield, we got an agreement with them, Deerfield's under the Wakeley, we do this stuff on Western Mass, but they're real small towns with 300 or 400 seniors, they'll, they'll travel if they can, and they will. Yes, sir.
I, I, I heard at this MMA conference that I went to, that one branch of state government will give out grants for sort of preparation and design, if you will, of, of the senior center. Getting, getting things up and running.
Yeah, DHCD may have helped to underwrite stuff a long time ago, but wow.
So so I might, I might have gotten the exact purpose of the funding, I might not have nailed that, but it's there, and it helps, it would help Redding get started if we could apply it for that. You mentioned that you like giving money out to people.
It's somebody else's money.
Somebody else's money. But do you, what programs do you fund?
Uh, just about, most of the money goes out, what's called formula grant basis, based on your population. So basically, as long as it's not illegal or immoral or fattening, we basically will do it. But we just, we just watch out for things that we don't think are, you know, don't represent a, you know, effective use of public money. So that's what I.
So so could you give some examples of, of grants that you've awarded?
Well, the ones, the formula grants is all, you're deciding, it's community deciding, all I'm doing is making sure that it's, it's a reasonable public purpose. The other things are the, what's called service and sandal grants, but they're, for instance, one of the things that's happened a lot lately, you may not know this, but, or you probably are, where the Alzheimer's, there's a whole lot of communities that are now doing stuff with Alzheimer's that wasn't happening like three years ago, it was not happening. Secretary who just left sadly, she's brilliant, I really do mean brilliant, she just, you can't be 16 places at once. But the Alzheimer's stuff is really, really important, when she really bought my own, my own mother. But it's like, having that is a place where you get, you can get de-stressed as a caregiver. That's got to happen. And it's, you're going to need it in virtually every town now. I'm not going to say sometimes you're going to be able to go two or three towns away, but mostly it's, you know, it's in town, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
So for those watching at home and that can't see this chart, I mean, for those in the audience, so in June of 2017, there was a presentation on seniors, and they had some really interesting statistics. And that was that, in Reading, based on our census data, by 2030, we would have 8,000 residents that were over the age of 60. One third of homeowners, our senior, but in 2015, one third of our homeowners were seniors, one third lived alone. 88% of our seniors have incomes less than $50,000, and one third have disabilities. So when we talk about seniors, these statistics are really important as far as what it means for us. One of the things that you said that struck me is that, is the idea of a community center where it's joint with other demographics within the population is not a popular.
It's not, and I'll give you specifics if you want.
And and that, I can, I believe you. But my question is, you know, as I look at this chart that you've presented and look at the broader demographics, the over 60, as of 2030, there, we have this.
That's what it nets out.
That, that, that's the max, right? So what happens 30 years after that, when frankly, my generation then bumps into that 60 and over?
Well, okay, what will happen is this, the popul, I've got, I've got this actually in a different chart, but basically, the population is not going to decrease before 2050. So the increases are going, there's two things that are going to go on. The increases go, if, if, happen through, through 2030. It will not actually drop, because people don't, once they turn 60, they'll die. Right? So in point of fact, you know, before 2050, no, there won't be anything. We're good, we're good here. I'm simply saying that, that the support, what I'm concerned about as a person, and this, this is, is who's going to do the supporting, you know, in, in the community. That's a real, to me, I can't think of a more major issue, because I see the population.
So one of the things that, I, I have spoken with residents that fall into the senior category, and one of the issues that has been raised is the idea of young seniors versus older seniors, because the needs are different. And so we have young seniors who are more active, they want educational programs, they want fitness programs, these are the things that help to keep them young. And then we have the older seniors who have more medical needs, more mental health issues. And so as a town, we need to be able to tackle both of those. I, we did have a presentation, I don't remember when, from dementia-friendly Reading, that is working with local businesses, especially banks, to help train their employees. So I know that's something that's being.
It has been done in a lot of towns, I'm glad to say that. Thank you. Yeah. It's true. The issue is, well, the funny thing is, if you were to go into some of the senior centers and have a 90-year-old leading a fitness program, you realize, you know, it's just not what you think it is. Or, I don't know if any of you have played cheer volleyball, it's hysterical. This is something you can do with your grandchildren, right? Because there's, there's a net in the middle, and, and they all have to stay, and they're getting all this exercise, and they don't even know they're getting it, because they're laughing so hard, and all this stuff trying to get a ball over the net. It's a beach ball. Right? I mean, yeah, sorry, I get carried away.
No, you're wonderful, you're, it's, I'm sure everyone at home is thanking you for your laughliness, we tend to be a little dry. So all of this data has been wonderful, and it's definitely eye-opening. How do you help us?
That's a very rare question.
I have a question. From your travels, is a location important in a senior center? Does it need to be standalone? Does it need to be integrated in the community somehow? Does it matter?
Um, I, we, we have, I want to thank Jane, you know, seeing what the town, town is like. I mean, I will tell you this, you probably need, for every 100 square feet, you need one car space. That's about where it comes down.
Say that again.
For every 100 square feet of actual footage in the senior center, you're going to need a space for a car. That's what people will do. They, they will come. If you get, they will come, they will, they could, I mean, it's just, it just, what happens?
Outside of the state, have there been, you know, you hear these stories occasionally of these communities coming together to help address community space needs and senior needs, right? So, okay, no one in the state is doing it, but are there shining examples elsewhere that have done this successfully?
When you're thinking elsewhere, you have to remember that Massachusetts and New England does not really have much economy government. So if you're seeing that kind of stuff happen, it's happening outside of New England. Because in New England, it ain't happening. If you build, I mentioned, I mentioned, you know, Weymouth, it's like, they'll come, if there's, they'll go, they'll go to Freetown, I mean, it doesn't matter if it's, if they like it, they'll show up.
So to follow up on Vanessa's question, because obviously, you know, seniors is, you know, we talk about over 55, well, 55 is, is like, you know, it appears to be 25.
That's right.
So, but there are, you know, people who are 60 to 80, or 60 to 75, are different from people who are over 75. So, you know, because the needs are going to be different. So in your travels.
Inherently.
But my question is, is that in your travels, you've seen all these centers, are they able to integrate all of the, basically, all of the needs of the various populations, or is it more like, oh, this is more for, if you're not active, you don't, I mean, so it helps us program in terms of what, what kind of a facility we think we're going to need that's going to address.
Well, right, so, so I'm going to go back.
The ones who need the most help who may not be the most vocal.
The, I go back to what I mentioned about, maybe, you know, 10 minutes ago or so, and that is, you go to four or five senior centers, I'd be happy to suggest them of similar size and say, what makes it work? In fact, I brought the report from Marshfield, almost identical, just like, it's like, and you look at this, and they did this originally in about 2006 or something like that, and, and they said, oh, they'll love this, you'll appreciate this. They had a room, it was about like this, and a little rubber floor, and they said, because this is, only this many people is ever going to come to yoga for times, right? Within three weeks, they took over the entire eating area. True story. But they thought that this is all it's going to be, because, you know, that's, that's all it's, you know, that's all the need is, or whatever the story is. So I'm saying, being flexible, I, I, I'd love to say this, I made up the attitude, blessed others flexible, for they shall not be bent out of shape.
Yeah.
So, so, it's my own, I can copy right. So, so, it's my own, I can copy right.
That's, that's all you're...
But that, but that, but the point is, when you visit half a dozen places, you know, and I would say, you know, and there are different architects and all that stuff, but you realize that every single one that I've been to is too small, except for the Tom Irving. And I don't say that because I like to see people spend money. I like to see public money make it easy for people to live in a community in improved quality of life. That's all I'm getting out of this, and I think that's all.
Yeah, I'm, thank you, thanks a lot for your presentation. You're really preaching to the choir here. I think...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Is there capital money available through any programs you administer?
He cuts right to the chase.
Well, no, 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 no. You know, I, I...
6,000 square feet, that's a lot of money.
Can I, can I say something, I know it's gonna get some, why we, why libraries can get money for improvements, but not senior centers is something that...
Schools too, they have, they have a funding.
It's like, because the seniors, the seniors, well, what percent of, I'm gonna get myself in a little trouble this one. What percent, percent of, we think with seniors, what percent of the, of the budget, just seniors get back from the budget? Now, what I'm gonna say is this, for property tax, whatever it is, I'm gonna say 35, 38, 40, 42 percent, something like that, the taxes, property taxes are coming by seniors. The average senior center, actually, the average COA budget in Massachusetts for seniors is two-tenths of 1% return. I can come up with the numbers, I can get them for you. I'm telling you, that's the part that's sort of, the highest one in the state is eight-tenths of 1%, but most are around two-tenths of 1% or less. So it's sort of like a community, you can't make it a community center, because it's their home away from home. And if you go in there and you say, I've learned, you know, whatever it is, you've taken up Spanish, or you have, whatever, you know, it's like, it's opportunities. It really is.
But Emmett, you didn't answer my question.
So the answers, really, you have some answers unless somebody else comes up with money, you know, that's, that's...
So, there are no, there are no state programs available to help with the capital side? Is that what you're telling me?
Unless you know somebody who has a, who does an earmark somehow in the budget and slips $6 million in the governor's budget, then you have something. Other than that, I don't think so.
John, I learned at the session that you can get things earmarked, earmarked like a van or something like that, but there's, from what I was told, there's no capital.
Okay, what about program money? What kind of program?
Well, that's what the formula grant is there for.
Okay, but you know, what happens if we build a senior center, we find our own way to approve that capital, you know, internally inside this town, or any other way?
Yeah, that's typically how it's done.
So, stay with me for a second, okay? We get that built, it's adequate size to accommodate the senior population, and now we gotta develop, what you've said is, if you develop programs, people will utilize the space. We don't wanna build something that doesn't get utilized. So, that begs the next question. If there's no capital money available, is there, separate from the pro-rata shares that get moved by population? If Jane brings you a program that needs $100,000, is there, is there any way that we can think about that as being an opportunity within the state?
Um, I can't speak for the state, but I would say that opportunities, it's just, it's a matter of somebody having an interest. For instance, you have people who go, they, elders used to be, this was funny, a good instructor, we go from town to town to town, which I've already mentioned, it's not the programs. I mean, the programs are what? You've got fitness and people help pay for the fitness, I mean, they're giving $2 or $3 or whatever for this thing, and you've got 60 people who are having a blast, you know, in the cafeteria. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a matter of opportunities and people, the seniors themselves will, because it's, it's, it's pretty, it's not expensive to get the programs, I mean, they're really not.
Well, there is, there's lots of different expenses involved in program. I mean, I've worked on those in a variety of different age groups. You know, program specialists, for example, cost money. It's not, you know, it's not the trinkets that go into the program, it's the people that administer it and bring it forward. So my question to you is a simple one. The State Department of Elder Affairs, does it have the opportunity for us to come after program?
There's some ideas, what, there's, what's council do, okay, so, it's, it's easy enough to, this, this, these things, that, no, I mean, the, the, most community recognizes an expense, like you're underwriting, you know, you underwrite schools and you underwrite little legal, I don't know what all the expenses are that go, I should know because I move forward to town meeting, remember, but it's like, you know, you just do little things because it matters, it makes a difference if it means, I mean, there are literally, I could give you 12 pages of programs that are going on, but each one's gonna be any simple, humble examples, you know, come up all the time. One of the things that I'm concerned about, that it's, I'm off, off-target to this in one sense, I've already answered, is I would love to have, if the town on its annual census has two questions, and two questions of this, if it was, it started in Western Mass, maybe it don't come around here, I don't know. Two questions are, within the past 12 months, were you unable to get to a medical appointment due to lack of transportation? Okay, this goes out with the annual census. And the second question is, if you were without power for X hours, would you want someone to contact you? So now you get a community-wide understanding of who's at risk regardless of age because it's on the annual census, right? This is what now, I've gotten, I hope by now, 15 or 20 communities doing this thing because frankly, it should be everywhere. Simple questions. No, in the past 12 months, were you unable to get to a medical appointment due to lack of transportation? And secondly, if you were without power for X hours? And they get to fill in the X. So that way you know, regardless of age, whether they're 40 years old, or 20 years old, or 100 years old, and I've met a 105-year-old woman about six months ago on the Cape, pretty amazing. But it's like, you're, it's like, you're beginning to see a community acting what's called, the city of town does this community crisis intervention team, doesn't have to be a city, but every person who comes in, they don't discuss names, but the police, the fire, the, you know, the tax collector, they all get to, they don't know the person's name, but they say, how can we solve this problem? That stuff is so good. It's easy to do, you don't need names.
Emmett, can you, do you have a list, it sounds like you do this presentation a lot, do you have...
This is actually the second time only I've ever done it before, but...
Do you have a list of best practices, suggestions, you know, the idea...
12 pages, yeah.
Wonderful. Can you email that to us? Because I, I wanna be sensitive to that here, I love this, but I...
Yeah, there's, this is Watertown, here, hold on a minute. Look at some of the, actually, you're gonna get about 30 or 40 ideas from this, this thing alone.
Wonderful.
Believe me.
I'm gonna, we, we need to hear from the town accountant, speaking of money. So I, I'd like to thank you very much for coming in and...
Thank you for inviting me. I wanted to say that.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
I enjoy trying to see how, see if things work for the people.
We're trying to get it done, it's, it's so hard, but I think...
Yeah, we learned a lot.
A lot of little things, we do a lot of little things.
A lot of notions there.
Well, I would, the only thing I'd ask of you is, if you want to, is have people who come to the senior, go vote a senior center, it's just to visit two or three, and just see what go, what ticks, and then you'll see what their love is and what, what works.
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, we have two members who are working on capital projects, and this will fall under that, but some, some sort of town-wide survey for this type of thing. We've done that before.
You have done it, yeah.
For the override, and it was, it was very informative, and so that we can find the needs that fit Redding residents.
Well, I, I would, I, I understand what you're saying, and my, my suggestion is, if people go and get the sense when they go to this, of these other communities and say, this is what we want, you will get that as much as you will from the survey, because they're not old yet.
Sure, of course.
So it's, it's like, it's like one of those things, but if somebody comes in here and says, you know, we bring somebody in to the seniors, or put them on cable TV, by the way, I'm really a pusher of cable, and they come in, you realize, there are people who watch cable 2:00 AM and 2:00 PM because they wanna know what's going on, and they watch it seven days a week. Am I making this up? No. It's just that you're seeing opportunities, and that's, that's really the goal.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, do we need a break, folks?
Yeah, we're taking two minutes.
Two-minute, two-minute break? All right, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Back in session, over to the Town Accountant.
Thank you, Andy. So I'm going to give you a quick quarterly update as we stand as far as reporting for fiscal '18. We're all done with all of that. We've gotten our free cash certification, we've set our tax rate, we've done our Schedule A filing to DOR, and the end of year got done probably in the beginning of the season. And that's done by Gail primarily, but I have a component that I do for her. Our fiscal '18 audit is also complete. We're waiting on draft financials. We are waiting on a report from Siegel. It seems like everybody's trying to get this GAZB 74 report that's needed to finalize the financials. But once we get it, we begin working on continuing disclosure for our bondholders so that they know we're in good financial condition, that we're doing well. So a lot of that comes from the audited financial statements. But we've already gotten the request from our bond agent, and so we are starting to work on what we can, and as we get the financial statements, that will get completed. The thing that you see on the screen is an informational guidelines release that was supposed to go into effect a few years ago and then got postponed because some legislation was out there that could have potentially changed it. And it's related to PEG access, which is Public Education and Governmental Access for cable television. From what I understand, every cable TV purchaser pays some sort of fee on their cable bill that funds PEG access. And they forward that money to us, Verizon and Comcast, and we have a contract with RCTV to provide those services, and so we forward that money to RCTV. The way that DLS is looking at this is they really feel like they want consistency in the way it's done across all cities and towns, and they also believe that it should be an article at town meeting, appropriated at town meeting, so that it's acknowledged that the funds coming in are town funds, and then they're outsourcing someone to do the service. And so that's the position that they're taking, and they're basically saying to us, "You have a couple options," and I put this in your packet if you wanted to read through it. They said, "We would like to see either a receipts reserve revolving fund for it or an enterprise fund." The thing that's kind of confusing is how do you transition to a receipts reserve? Because in order to appropriate a receipts reserve, the money's already got to be there, so it makes it very difficult. This is supposed to be in effect July 1st, 2019, so we will need to act on it at April Town Meeting. And we get these payments kind of quarterly, so we're getting them throughout the year, so all the money wouldn't be there right now to give them. So I feel like the enterprise fund makes the most sense, and it would be voted every year, a budget with estimated revenues. We'd estimate what our revenues would be, and our expenses would obviously be a balanced budget, just like your water, sewer and stormwater. So I just wanted to give you a briefing on that because it is going to be an article that was added to our April Town Meeting warrant, and it does have to do with this IGR, and we don't want to be in noncompliance, so we are going, we're going to request an enterprise fund for the PEG access. So that is that. As far as financial staffing in the Finance Department, we are finally fully staffed and starting to transition roles, and things are going very nicely and smoothly, and we are already starting to feel the effect of being fully staffed, so I am so grateful for that override add, that Assistant Town Accountant, because I'm starting to be able to delegate small things, but still, it provides just, you know, as we free up her time, as she transitions her role to the next person, more time is being allotted to me to train, and you feel it every little bit, so I am so grateful for that. As far as the financial update, I put some things in your packet that I look at kind of high level just to give you an idea of what we're looking at. Start with the revenues.
Sharon, do you know what page within the packet this starts on?
Yes, it is on 5C17 is the revenue summary.
Oh.
5C17 is what I picked up on. Is that big enough to be seen?
That wasn't in our packet, though. Oh, maybe.
It was at the back.
Yeah, I got you right.
Uh-huh.
It's in there.
See if I can make this viewable.
That's good. A little bit more to the right.
Yeah, because I think... Well, maybe a little bit smaller. Is that viewable? It is kind of small stuff.
No. Not really.
Not really?
Well, I mean, I have it on my screen, but I don't know.
What'd you say? You think 90?
People at home can see it. I think it's about... Isn't it on page like 100?
135.
Your packet was rather big.
135, sorry. If you get rid of that bar on the right, it'll make it a little bit more...
Do the little arrow.
It'll get a little more space.
Oh, this one here?
Nope, nope. Right in the middle.
That one, yep.
This one here?
Nope.
This one?
Up.
Oh, this one?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. All right. So this is kind of a high level of our revenue for the general fund, kind of just done by category. And so, and this has been run through December 31st, and it compares what our revenues look like to budget, but also to what it looked like last year at the same time. At six months through the year, you'd expect revenues to be somewhere in that 50% range, and we are right about there. Last year, we were just over this 50.99%. We're at 49.35. Down here are other financing sources, and that's going to just be me moving money, so if I haven't done it yet, it's going to show a difference. But in general, the revenues are up here, the section that says 01, and it's categorized delinquent property taxes, real estate taxes, motor vehicle. One thing to note is motor vehicle excise, the big commitment, the first commitment of the year, is done in January, so that hasn't even gone out yet, and we're still at our 50%. So there's really not that much cause for concern, although this is looked at every month to see if there's any chance that we might have some revenue deficits. There are things that are timing, and motor vehicle excise is one of them, where, you know, what we're collecting is really, you know, motor vehicles from the prior year.
So we have zero delinquent property taxes? Is that, am I reading this wrong?
It looks like we collected...
Oh, it's percent collected.
We don't, we don't have a budget for delinquent property taxes, but we've collected 44,000 so far.
Okay, but this is not what's out, Steve.
No, no.
What's happening with earnings on investments?
Earnings on investments is huge, and I think we talked about that. We're getting like double the return that we had been getting, and so we had increased at November Town Meeting, trying to get there, but we didn't have, we had extra money there that we didn't have a source to use it for, and so because we've had this influx of double the interest rate that we're getting, we're definitely outpacing what we have on the budget. So it could also be a funding source for something else going forward if we, you know, we could increase the projected revenues for, for interest earnings or earnings on investments and use it towards something else that's needed, say, in April if we needed to. But it is the area that we were talking about that we see going forward that we're going to...
Well, banks went from paying zero to paying two, two one basis points, so that adds up.
Yeah, it really does. So that's where we stand, just at a high level, just to show you that we're not in danger of any kind of revenue deficit at this point. Then I'm going to bring up the, the expenses for the general fund, and I ran that by category that they voted at town meeting. Can everybody read that? At 100%. So the categories that you see at town meeting that we vote, most departments are salary and expense, and so we can't commingle it, we can't go over that line item. So for administrative services, they're 46.2% of their salaries and 64.5% of their expenses, and capital's at 76.1%. None are in deficit for that department, and overall, 58% of the budget is expended. But as I said, you can't commingle these. The one that stands out as, you know, problematic easily is usually salaries because they tend to be expended pretty much equally throughout the year. So if you're seeing a number that's over 50%, it might highlight to you, we definitely have a problem. But, so knowing where we are within the year can kind of highlight a problem with salaries pretty easily, but expenses aren't always expended equally throughout the year, so there's a lot more research involved. But making sure, I do this exercise just to make sure that nobody is in a deficit, that we haven't got a problem immediately on the forefront. And so looking at public services, you can see that they're okay, finance is okay, you know, there's not anything that's highlighting like, "Oh, my gosh, what's happening there?" And sometimes it could be something just in the wrong place if there is a, you know, a high percentage. But, you know, capital is one of those things where once they've awarded a contract, they're going to put a PO out there, and it's going to be 100% used or the majority of used. Capital, I would say, once they've got things going and they've selected a contractor, a lot of times that's expended 100% right away. That doesn't indicate a problem, as long as it's not over.
So if salaries are significantly lower than the 50%, is that an indication that maybe we haven't filled positions?
Mm-hmm. So a lot of times that's the question I'll be asking, you know, what's going on? And then if there is something that looks like it's trending high when I'm looking at this, I would be reaching out to a department head saying, "Something doesn't look right." And maybe I might be drilling in myself to help them find whatever that issue is. Some areas like snow and ice and facilities are voted bottom line, but most departments, it's salary and expense. So I ran it this way just to give you kind of that viewpoint and to show that, you know, we're kind of in good shape so far. So looking at the enterprise funds, I'll start with water.
Sharon?
Yep.
Sorry, to make it take a step back, on DPW trash, no street lighting, expenses are at 72%. I know we tend to undercut that one because we can never quite budget for what our snow expenses are going to be. Is that on track with previous years?
Well, the snow, the snow, which line are we talking, DPW trash and snow?
05, I think.
Yeah, I'm on 5C2, and it's... Yeah, I think Bob did you, sorry.
Oh, 70%? The 70.5%?
Yeah, the rubber contracts are fully encumbered for the whole year. They do two six-month quotes, so that's 100% spent.
If you see the encumbered column, that's POs. So when they have a contract in place, they will issue a PO for the full amount of the contract. There it is. So if it's in that encumbered column, it means that there's a PO holding the budget so that it can't be expended. Once the bills come in, it reduces the encumbrance and then increases the actual expense.
Thank you.
Good questions. Sharon? Are you done? I mean, has I had some just general questions?
Oh, yeah. I can go if you have for general fund. I was just going to show you.
No, just general questions, not about...
Okay.
But I can wait if you want to just...
You can tell me if you want.
Well, it's just a, it's actually a question. So at the MMA conference, one of the, one of the sessions I sat into was best practices on, you know, financial plan, you know, finance, and they had some folks in from the state, and they're really, they're really interested in sort of helping communities get sort of really good at these financial tools. I think it's really more designed for some of the smaller towns that don't have obviously our sophistication, but they do, as part of the compact, kind of the community compact, they have put extra money into grants for things like, you know, beefing up your kind of reporting and things like that. So have you looked into that as, you know, basically, you know, things that you might need just like, "Oh, I wish I had this," that we could report better and send in a grant? Because they have money, that's the...
Yeah, we actually asked for the community compact grant to fund our cash management software for Munis as well as HR software, and we were awarded, I think it's like $45, it's already came in, actually. The sooner that they awarded, it came in.
Right, that's last vote. Right, but now they're talking about they actually increased that bucket.
Oh, for the next year.
For this going forward, for this fiscal year, so...
So, I mean, I think there's always been that mentality that, "Oh, we won't get it, we're too affluent, but we got this money," so that kind of puts that thinking out there, "Maybe we could get some more, maybe we can look at something else."
Yeah, there's things that you need. I mean, you know, they're, they want towns to submit those applications.
Good to know. Good to know. Good suggestion. So I'm going to pull up water revenues just to show you where we are there. And this is a more detailed look, but in total, this is the same sort of look as the general fund, where we're running it through December 31st. It shows you to budget, it's hard to see, it shows you to budget, and then also last year's percent collected and where we were last year. So over here is last year and this year. And so we're right around where we were last year, around that 56%, and we're only halfway through the year when I'm running this report. So not a real concern for the revenues in water. There is, when I look at stormwater, a question, so I'll get there.
So in gross dollars, this is about three and a half million that we've collected so far?
Mm-hmm. Sewer. Sewer revenues, last year we're about 58.52%, we're at 56.5. So, yeah, and we've collected $3.5 million already out of a $6.2 million budget. So revenues are not a concern for sewer either at this point. That doesn't mean it could, you know, we could stop collecting money. I wouldn't think so, but it's possible, I suppose. This looked a little strange to me, and then I realized what it was. So stormwater, if you look over here, the last year's revised budget was $360,096 for revenues, that's what we projected, and then we, last year at this time, in December, we had $223,000 of that $360 collected. Now, the current year budget is at 517 or just under 518 because we increased the, we increased the fee for stormwater from 40 to 60. And so then I was like, "Well, why didn't the, you know, why are we, we're seeing similar amount of money, 231 collected compared to 223 last year?" And when I inquired about this, I was told, "Well, the new rate doesn't go out until the December bills," and this is being run through December, "So we'll see that, that effect hitting on the other end." So that, you know, so that's where something like this, my first look and glance at this, and obviously we dig deeper, but this is easiest to show you, just where, points me in the direction of where there might be an issue, and this was definitely a question that had to be asked. And then the last thing I'm going to show you is just a summary of the enterprise funds by category. Enterprise funds are voted bottom line, so, but I still show them to you by category as long as they don't go over in total without the cap, yeah, in total, they don't go over, they're fine. So one could be negative, but in general, they don't tend to go over. Again, I was looking and said, "Okay, well, water's about 49% expended, salaries are about 50%, sewers in that 41% range for salaries." You know, nothing's looking and highlighting as high, and then I look at stormwater and it looks kind of low. And drilling into that salary number at 26.4% in the prior year, they had two laborers working in stormwater, and in this year, there's only one. And then I asked the question, "Why aren't they, if they're injured?"
It's best you stop right there.
Okay, so they only have one person. So that person's not working, so that affects the expenses a little bit because they're doing less work, they only got one person. But on top of that, they, a lot of the work that's done in stormwater is done in the spring and the fall, and so their expenses tend to trail a little bit anyway, but the loss of a person brings that back just a little bit, so. So in general, like my, you know, preliminary look at this, I was not overly concerned in most areas. Stormwater was the only one where I was like, "Jeez, that looks funny." And then when we're doing our, you know, balancing and we start to look at each department's year-to-year budget, probably we get more questions because it's more, I'm seeing all the accounts, and so there might be issues within the accounts. But this is kind of the easiest way to show you without drilling into too much detail where we stand.
Yeah. I think it's fantastic. I just have a question. Just one other quick comment. Actually, this is, I don't think so much for Sharon as it is really for the rest of us. So at this workshop, they were very encouraging of us to set our, have our classification hearings done a little bit early. We tend to do them sort of late October, almost into November. They were suggesting a best practice is to really kind of do them, you know, they said September, but like early to mid-October, because what happens is that everything comes in and then you run the risk of, they don't have as mu, I mean, they were upfront, they don't have as much staff to kind of do that. So the quicker you get in, the quicker you set your thing, because everything comes at the end. You don't want to be part of the funnel that's at the end. So it may mean for scheduling purposes that we look at doing this, maybe, you know, moving it up one meeting. They were pretty, you know, that was one of the takeaways they wanted people to go home with, so they want to get the stuff over here, so...
This year, we needed to be a little careful because of the senior tax relief being made.
Right.
So that went right through the first day in September.
But I know it didn't impact us, but, you know...
Victor can speed that up by certainly two weeks.
So that was, that was just the only thing that came out of that that I thought would be helpful really for all of us.
That was all I had to present. Any other questions?
I'd like to thank you for a very clear explanation of how our money is spent, how it comes in, and I encourage the public, it may look intimidating at first when you see it, but if you look through the page, pages, page by page, it does make sense, and it will tell you where our money comes from and goes to. And it's being spent the way we said it was going to be spent, as important. Thanks, Sharon.
One thing I should mention before I go is there will be something I'll have to bring to you with the next meeting. It's internal controls for federal grants that Gail and I are working on. It just needs select board approval, so it's a long document, and we haven't got it in final form yet, so as soon as I have it, I will bring it to you. It definitely just needs to be kind of blessed by the select board according to the auditors, just to be sure that you're aware of what we've put into the document and... Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Good job. Okay, now over to Bob for a preview of the warrant article for town meeting.
I'm going to go a little bit fast because we have some audience members for one of the articles. I'll try to mention whether an article is routinely in annual town meeting or something that's new. The election's on April 2nd. Reports are always delayed till the end, and structural motions are, I'm sorry, reports are done and structural motions delayed to the end in capital. Those items two, three and four are designed by Charter to be those first three articles after an election in the annual town meeting. Typically, in this year, it'll be the same. We'll amend the FY '19 budget. I guess we won't have as much of a snow surplus as I had hoped. We'll have prior year's bills. Right now, Sharon doesn't have any, but if she gets, gets any, we will be declaring some surplus materials. You can see my notes over here. We have a suggested general bylaw for surplus policy that the bylaw committee has not had time to discuss. So I'm not sure if we'd go forward with that, but it's been over a year that we've wanted to, so we may have Allison Jenkins, our procurement officer, in to see you at the next meeting to go over it, because it can certainly be sponsored by the select board. Another annual meeting, typical, typical event is to appropriate funds into OPEB. We have town meeting vote a budget that specifies a certain amount. As long as health insurance hasn't run into a difficulty during the year, we then move that amount previously voted into the trust fund at April. into the trust fund at April. Sharon mentioned the new revolving fund or cable access. I think that's gonna be a little tricky to administer, so we'll have to talk about that. Where town meeting is gonna be asked to approve it, we're not sure for the first year how much detail they'll want to see, for instance, from RCTV's budget, since it's an enterprise fund like any other budget. I'm gonna stop there because we are also the town involved in negotiations with RCTV right now, so we'll try to wrap those up before this has to happen. Then there's the annual approval of revolving funds and also the annual approval for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I know one of your goals is to discuss whether to change that. The ideal time to change it would be at a November town meeting, so next November, for instance. If November town meeting does change the way we approach it, then we could skip this next year, but we have to do this for this year.
Okay.
The bylaw committee, again, town council perhaps can give us an update, they haven't met in a while, they did just get a new member.
Yeah.
We believe they're ready with gender-neutral language, I know council has provided them a version. The next two items, I'll skip over quickly and we'll come back to one. There's a purchase of some land at Timberneck Swamp, I spoke to the owner last, late last week, he's interested in going forward, to be discussed.
We arrived at a price with him?
He preferred to sell it than donate, as far as we go, so.
Well.
We can get there.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be hard.
We've had, been having that discussion with him off and on for several years.
Yeah, I, I can talk to you offline, but the email address he gave me doesn't seem to be working, so I tested it out and it got kicked back to me last night. We'll discuss fifteen in, in much more detail shortly, it's approving an easement in Simon's Way. I didn't include this in your packet because, for one thing, you have a subcommittee meeting on it next Monday, I didn't want to front-run them, and also we're having a staff meeting tomorrow, but there's likely to be as many as six depth debt authorizations requested for all capital projects. And again, Vanessa and I'll talk about that in more detail next Monday.
Okay.
But just to list them quickly, building security improvements, turf two, the Auburn Water Tank, those are all things you should be familiar with. Grove Street Water Main is something new. Sturgis Sewer Station's been on a long-term plan, and then the drainage work on Main Street's been on a long-term plan, so only, only the Grove Street one is new. I expect all or most of those to go forward, but we'll know next time. And then there's the annual budget, a very small housekeeping, chapter ninety authorization. And last but not least, to remove town meeting members if folks have not attended. So it's, it's a good, solid two nights if we have all that debt authorization, those are typically reasonably quick, but it still requires a certain amount of time for presentation. It's possible we go to three nights with this. It's, it's a heavily finance-oriented agenda, not a lot of policy, which has not been typical in the last few years. So that's an overview, if there's any questions, before we circle back and get into more detail on any of them.
Well, the only recommendation I have is under Article Two for reports, Dan will no longer be on the board.
Okay.
So I'm happy to do that unless someone else is really dying to do the arm of duty.
Well, you're in better position than the rest of us.
I mean, we may retain him as far as the subcommittee goes, joint subcommittee.
Okay, yeah, so the board can decide.
But we can decide that.
Good catch.
But that's it.
Okay, anything else? Okay, let's have a little bit more of a discussion on Simon's Way, Range Road. I'll invite Attorney Latham to speak and I'll just give a really quick overview. Going back, I don't know, two, three years anyways, the topic came up, the Zani's own some land over by Simon's Way that they're not using productively. There's two parcels, I'll just call them kind of the north parcel and the south parcel for simplicity, and I'm sure council will get into more detail. The north parcel is, is wet, not a lot of highest and best uses, but certainly is potentially a very interesting parcel for the town to acquire for passive recreation, for trails, conservation, and the Trails Committee I think would be pretty interested. And these are discussions we have not had with those committees yet, this is the first time we're discussing in public. The southern parcel, if you will, is, is a little more complex. It is dry land, under the right circumstances, I would say it's developable. Those circumstances include the need for an easement. So what we had done last summer, I believe, was get an independent appraiser. That packet was in your report, as was mentioned earlier during public comment, there's two loose appraisals on the value of the land with and without an easement that are substantially different in value. I know Brad will get into some of the background, it's an interesting historical parcel. And the reason Brad wanted to come in and discuss this is because it is a bit of a juxtaposition between if the town aneesment then without, and if the town is the buyer, technically the abutter, so we don't have to give ourselves an easement. You're very open and above board about the situation, I think it's, you know, very commendable to do it that way.
Did you call up?
So, go ahead, yeah.
Just applying the scan, there's no number after it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, seeing you a second time tonight. I'm here with Bill and Ray Gagden, who are involved with the Zani family. I'd like to give you a quick overview of the Zanis, who they are, and then a history, because this is a very unusual site, a very unusual history at this site. The Zanis immigrated from Italy about eighteen ninety, had lived in Redding all that time, and they're currently about twenty family members living in the town, they do not have a high profile. And they have a construction business, you hear, which closed down recently. They have done a lot of generous things for the town. They actually built Little League Park of the Crisco, Hunt Memorial Park. They have done things in discounts, cost-only for Burbank Ice Arena, the site work there. When it came time for the town to close the landfill, it needed, the RMLD needed an easement to come off of their, through their property, they gave that radish to the town. They've been good citizens and we ask, if the select will keep that in mind, we hope town giving it as well. Getting to the site itself, if I could, orient you, if I may. Simon's Way comes off here and comes up in this direction. That is all a public way at this point. That was developed as a consequence, really, the Burbank Ice Arena, that's where it started. The other branch of that, which is called on this, this town map, Simon's Way, but it's not really, it's called Range Road, I think vernacularly.
Yeah.
The area here, I'm going, it's in blue, is the actual perimeter of the Zani property. The Range Road is on the, on the Zani's property, it's not on town land. I'll recite how that came to pass. The gap in question is right there. Their property line ends here, the public portion of Simon's Way goes that way. What basically happened is, the Zanis originally owned properties sort of like this. In the Cold War period in nineteen fifty-four, the federal government felt the need to establish a Nike defense system on the east coast. They took Bear Hill on the southern part of Redding, which we're now fighting over the housing for that, as the radar location and their facilities. They had them align a site directly down to where the silos were gonna be, the missiles were gonna be down, were in this area right back here. They never got built, but as part of all of this, they took certain, call them masking easements, so no one would build a certain height and block their ability to communicate with their missile defenses, they had to be launched. So they took all property in different forms, they took some forms in easement, some forms in the fee. They took an easement over the property belonging to the Zanis. They took an easement through here, through the Zanis' property. They then took the fee and all of this. So they took a portion of the Zanis' property here in fee, absolute ownership. In about nineteen, if I get the dates right here, I think it was in the late sixties, they decided this was surplus land, they didn't need it, so they gave land back in different ways to the people for whom they took it. Well, they gave the Zanis back their property free of any easement, except this easement here, they gave that to the town of Redding. So the Zanis owned that land, but are subject to the town's right of way over, which the town then granted, gave to the Redding Rifle Club in the sixties, nineteen sixty-eight, the right to use that. Not unlike what we're asking the town to do now, is to give a simple easement over an existing way for that little connector right there to connect to Simon's Way. The town was given the fee and the rest of this. So by that coincidence of that lot line, we end up with a gap, and that gives rise to a need for relief. You've heard, you heard a number early in time, about one point three million? Who knows if that's a true number? Who knows if anyone really buy it for that? I mean, who, who knows if the town will buy it or anybody else will buy it? But the idea is that this was originally a construction stockyard, that's where they store their materials and so forth. Of course, they don't need that anymore now that they've retired. So they are getting out of relief, I may go, and they are looking to try and take some of their assets and provide for their award being for the rest of their lives. And the hope therefore is that they can create the connector and then have an ability to use their land. Now, I will say that that easement, that action right there's never been interrupted. When the government gave this back to them and gave it to the town, they have continually used that for access. So what we're trying to do is perfect the title by means of an access easement grant right in that area there. So I'm gonna ask if, Bob, if you could put up scan eight?
Could I just, before you go on, ask a quick question? For those of us who aren't realtors and familiar with taking in fee?
Explain it?
Please.
A fee is the actual ownership of land. It's considered to be a bundle of rights, but it's the absolute ownership of the land in perpetuity. An easement is simply a non-possession right to cross land, whether it's with electricity or with this traffic or whatever it may be. So that's the distinction I'm trying to make here. So when the, when the government took that one area, they gave the fee to the town and that extinguished in question the rights, the easement rights that these folks had had all of years.
Bob?
And the little section that you're talking about?
Bob, can you blow that up a little bit, please?
Ah, there we go.
That's much better.
So the easement you're looking for is that right angle stretch? No, I'm sorry.
Right there.
Right there, yeah, okay. Just above the right.
It's an existing road, there's no change required by the town.
Yeah. You're over that road right now.
Right, and it was never, that was never.
Drive to the rifle range.
By the rifle.
As you approach the, as you approach the hockey rink.
Yeah.
Looking at the hockey rink, you go left.
Right.
To the baseball field and the hockey rink, or you go to the right behind the hockey rink.
The rifle range.
And to the rifle range.
And, oh, go ahead.
I am not an engineer, so as I look at Orsa Decliner, so as I look at this map, I need a little bit of clarification, which is that that road, that exists, correct? Yes, that one there. What would an easement allow you to do that you cannot, that the owners cannot do now?
It would give them a title right to cross it. They've crossed it for years, the only time they didn't, when the US government had possession. But they do not have the actual recorded easement right to use that, even though they use it uninterrupted.
Yeah, because it's land law now, so they can't.
In essence.
And that land was never, that easement that you're looking for, that land has always been owned by the town?
No, that land is owned by families from whom it was taken by the US government. What, what the US government did, they took from many different private owners, and they then ended up giving it back to the Towngate thirty thousand for it. They actually gave it back to the town, I shouldn't say back, they gave it to the town for town use, even though they took it from private parties.
And that section there of road, that belonged to whom before the US government?
I, I think it may have been Wakefield family, I'm not sure, Nesmith or Simons, they're all own land down there, I can research that, but I don't recall, I can't, who had the actual fee to that. But that was, what was interesting was that for eons, for, at least from the nineteen forties when the Zanis bought the property, they used that uninterrupted, as did apparently the Rifle Club.
Yes, yes.
Rifle Club came to the town in the sixties and asked, please give us the easement. They did, they needed, not just over here, they needed all the way across the Zani property. They were totally land law.
Another point of clarification, that little piece where they want the easement, is that not a public road if it is owned by the town?
It's not a public road, the Simon's Road taking comes up like this. They never carried anything down there.
So.
It's owned by the town, it's used as a road, but it's not categorized as a public way.
Yeah, so is it a private way?
It's owned by the town, so it's a private use.
Well, it's a road that we don't maintain.
It's a paved path.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Ploaza.
Well, I do know that the, certainly the Rifle Club, the Rifle Range would want throughout the course of the year to have it be open. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I don't either, I don't.
Ploaza, but.
We'd ploze Simon's Way for sure, but.
My guess is, you know, the plow trucks down there?
Yeah.
Up on that, you assume.
It looks like a.
It's just, it's a road, yeah, okay.
Does it?
And now, is it safe to say that, so the Rifle Range was granted at no, for no fee, the opportunity to be able to use Range Road to access private property?
That's what I understand, I have a copy of the easement grant of this whole stretch.
Including the small piece that you're talking about? Including that, that small?
Yeah, they, they actually had nothing, and they had to get all of this right from the town and then the right through here. Now, the Zanis don't need anything from the town because they actually own this area, subject to the easement. So all they, it's like a hundred feet long.
So the town has had a history of contributing to private owners access to their property. In this case, it was the range, they, they granted the Rifle Range the opportunity to, to transverse that, to get to their property.
Is the Range a nonprofit organization?
The Range is a, it is a selected nonprofit, it's a private club. It's not a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, I think the, the philosophy at that time was that there's a way to do it.
I think that's absolutely what happened there, and I think that's, I think that's why you're in front of us today.
So.
I mean, it seemed to have been overlooked in the, in the shuffle, you know, fifty years ago.
If the Zanis had piggybacked at that time, I have no doubt in my mind that's how much given to them to do this, they're trying to just restore that which was taken away by the US government.
If, if there, is there a reason why this is being, so it sounds like they've owned this property for decades?
They've owned this, the Zanis owned this since nineteen forty.
Okay. Is there a reason why this easement is being requested now, approaching the sale of the property as opposed to while they, in any previous time?
Because they kept using it and no one said they couldn't use it, and there's a road there, and now they reached a stage where if they are going to sell it, to do something with it, they have to have.
They have to have an easement. I, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, that they're asking the town to give back what was taken away years ago, but that's not exactly true if they never owned that section of land.
If I, if I made you believe that I said they're giving back what was taken away, that's all, well, in one sense, that is correct, although I don't think I said it. They had, they had a right over here, there are different kinds of easements, there are easements by necessity, meaning that they needed to get to the land, easement by use, descriptive easements. They had a legal right to use this, even though they don't have a record, recorded right to use that. Because they used it from the nineteen forties for some period of time.
But if they want, if they want to sell it, though, they need that easement because the new owner would not have that same right.
Exactly right, that's exactly.
So, oh, Bob.
Bob? Why would the town grant an easement over a road that the town doesn't own?
The town was given, in fact, let me go look at, I can call up, you want to see something convoluted, if I may? Bear with me. If you go to fourteen, scan fourteen, this is a plan of the Army Corps of Engineer Plan. This is the Army Corps of Engineer Plan, if you go down, it's a, okay, thank you. This is, I'm sorry, the, the letters are sideways, but the, the US government put north to the west, north to the side, north, north to the top of the plan. I've marked this in yellow, that is Range Road. This shows what they took, and any time they took where it says an E, that means it was an easement they took. If there's an absence of an E like this, they took the fee ownership. So you can see here, the US government took an easement over this portion of the Zanis' property. They didn't give that back to the Zanis, they gave the fee, that everything else they took, but they gave that to the town. So that's why the town was able to give to the Rifle Club an easement over the Zani property and this piece, even though the Zanis own the underlying land.
I see.
Mr. Chairman, there was a previous public comment regarding this, but may I suggest that we open the public comment in the event that someone else would like to contribute? May I suggest that we open a public comment in the event that someone else would like to contribute, given the new, given the information, the presentation?
Yes, however, there are, if, unless I misread the stuff that was in the packet, there are, there are three parcels that we're discussing here, not just this southern one.
No, I was only discussing that all we have asked for is going forward is on that piece.
Oh, Bob, you, okay.
There's two parcels, this is the only actually.
Oh, but two parcels the Zonies own, or is it?
Ones to the north not been shown tonight. And not the subject of discussion.
Right center field.
Yeah.
Got it.
But farther.
Deep in the woods.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, is that?
Yes, that's, that's our case, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'd like to hear from the board and then a quick public comment.
So I just, I just have a question. So obviously, with our lack of field space and other kinds of things, this potentially could be a negotiation between the town and the Zonies if they wanted to entertain and if we thought it was a good public purpose for the town to purchase the land, in which case, like Bob said earlier, we wouldn't necessarily need to give an easement. And so I know field space and other kinds of things are a big priority.
Right.
Are we putting the cart before the horse in sort of granting an easement on a potentially, a potential piece of land that we may want to approach the Zonies about for a public purpose and, you know?
So are we negotiating against ourselves?
Ourselves, right. In which case then, you know, we ought to figure out a process in which is that something that they even want to entertain before we give an easement on something that we may want to come back and then have to pay a million dollars more for.
So I want to.
John. Oh, it's all right, go ahead, finish your thought and then I, but I would, I do have some thoughts here.
So that thought had crossed my mind as well. At the same time, we're talking about a family who has lived here for many years, who has been very generous with the town, and I want to make sure that we are fair in our evaluation of what their land is worth. So I, it would feel very uncomfortable to me if we hold them hostage over the easement because it benefits us personally, although I agree with you that we have a shortage of land. So I want to handle that carefully. My other question is to this, so I was looking at your, over your shoulder, Andy. It looks like that is currently undeveloped, that.
Yes.
The whole piece is undeveloped right now? So is there a conservation issue there where can we even, should we choose to purchase it, bulldoze what appears to be a very large swath of trees?
Well, I mean, there's a lot, I think there's a, there's a wetland in there, Bob.
There definitely isn't in the northern piece. I'm not sure if there's too much in the southern.
The piece in question is dry. But I'm, you know, who knows until you actually bring that map up, but, you know. Just based on what I've seen of other adjacent land that's tied out to the rifle club.
Have you ever put up the wetland, this property?
So that, so if they, is this the parcel that was discussed about the value of the parcel and the number of houses that could go on it, Bob?
The appraisal, yeah, had highest and best use.
Yeah.
Highest and best use, that's what.
In the appraisal, that discussion was going on.
John, yeah.
Yeah, I do have, I have, you know, a number of comments about this. First of all, this general area, this parcel being part of a much bigger piece of land that is probably the last place that Redding has to develop recreation. I mean, honestly, there's a couple of choices that'll happen here. If this property is sold, whether, let's forget what the price is of the property. Whether it's sold to the town or whether it's sold to a developer. If a developer buys it, any number of things could go there, you know, ranging from, you know, commercial development to pretty big 40B could go in that place, I'll tell you that right now. I mean, there's a lot of things that could happen there. There is currently a road that has, that's on the property with an easement held by the town. I would suggest this, that before we start entering into who's going to buy what, where, and what's going to happen where, we do know that this is a piece of property that rightfully has had its access available during its useful business life to the Zani family. And that's because they used it, they had that opportunity. It predates the government owning it and granting it back. I mean, the Zani family has been here 120 years, you know, living here and developing the town. Furthermore, they had that option and were continuing to use it as part of their construction business. Did they make a mistake in the 1960s by not piggybacking on with the other privately held property? I think so. Was it intentional? I don't think so on either party. I think that they had rights and were using them, and therefore it didn't occur to anybody, either the town or to the Zani family at the time, that they would need to do this. I would submit, kind of along the same lines as Vanessa has raised, you got to forget what's going to happen later, you got to do the right thing here, in my opinion. I do think that the town made a decision 50 years ago to do the right thing for a privately held piece of property that had been developed and allowed an easement. You know, the participants at the, and members at the Redding Rifle Club transverse this freely and will always be able to transverse it freely because the town owns the easement and they further granted rights there. I would suggest that this was an oversight 50 years ago and I think that, you know, I would recommend the town meeting because this is going to come as a, as a warrant to town meeting. This isn't for us to decide.
Well, it's a new proposal.
We have to put it on the.
If you, I mean, 10 residents can get together and petition the article or the board can do it.
Well, I mean, I guess where I'm coming from is I think it needs to get in front of town meeting and the story needs done.
Right, well, that's ultimately the decision maker.
And so if the Board of Selectmen is, are in a position to move that forward with due speed, I would strongly suggest we do that and I would support that. As a member of town meeting who ultimately would be voting on whether to grant that easement at little or no cost, I think it follows a protocol that has happened, you know, over 50 years and that probably should have been done a long time ago. And then, once that's done and the property is going to find its value based on who the buyer is. And, you know, I make no bones about the fact that I believe we are, we do not have enough recreational developed, recreationally developed land, you know, and that means not just baseball, football, lacrosse fields, that means the opportunity for.
A new community center.
Yeah, you know, a community center.
Basketball.
The opportunity for biking and hiking trails and finally to actually connect, you know, town conservation land that has been inaccessible in other ways. I think that there's a lot of opportunity here, but that's not the discussion today. The discussion is, you know, this is a potential warrant for the Selectmen to put out there. I strongly encourage that we put it forward for consideration.
The easement.
Yes.
Discussion.
Yeah, easement, the request that's being made, you know.
Yep, so.
Go ahead.
I apologize. I'd be curious if anybody had additional comments based on what was presented.
Yes. Any public comments? Yes.
Tony DeRazza, John Street, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only comments really are that the government took this property 50 years ago. They compensated the Zonies for the property at that time. They returned parts of the property back to the Zonies when they decided they didn't need it. As for where we stand today, it's no longer in the 60s or 70s. We have to do what is right for the town. And I understand the Zonies have done a lot for the town over the years, but at this point, you're looking at a large buildable lot that more than likely will be a 40B if it's given access. They've already done it to their properties at the end of Lakeview and even is the way to maximize the value of the property. So what you're looking at is what can the town, or what should the town get for this property? That is all.
Thank you.
So at this point, Bob, do we, what is the ask of us, right? We don't, this is just a preview. We don't need to approve anything at this point, correct?
Correct. In four weeks, by charter, you must close the warrant. I generally like to plan that with a storm date, so it's scheduled for your next meeting, two weeks. Either the board will vote to put this article on or not. And as I mentioned, you know, it can be petitioned between now and then also.
Sure.
So 10 citizens can put something on the warrant?
Yes. So it, the point being, you can find its way to town meeting in different ways. Sometimes you sponsor things as a courtesy to other boards.
We've done that before.
Again, that's, there are many paths to town meeting.
Yeah. John?
John? Yeah, I, first of all, I think it would be the appropriate courtesy to extend to this request from this board. Obviously, we've got a little time, we've got a couple of meetings. It doesn't sound like we're voting on, we're getting a preview of warrants, but I would, so I have two things to mention. One is that I do think we should push this forward as a warrant, I would go, from the Board of Selectmen. We'll decide that as time decides and when we get to that place. The interesting thing, kind of tied to the public comment we just heard, that begs an interesting question. So let's say, for example, that the town has no interest in owning this, which it may not. There may not be adequate funds to, you know, further expand recreation. It may be the decision of town meeting and that's not a capital project that should be embraced. Let's think about the very thing that the public commenter just mentioned. What if a major development of any kind goes in there, whether it's a housing development or a commercial development? If this town meeting makes a decision to extend, you know, an easement, what will happen is that will put that property in play for commercial development, which will put a lot of revenue potentially in play to this town, much more so than it's being, it's being taxed right now as vacant land. We're not receiving, we're receiving peanuts for it today. And frankly, you know, if this easement doesn't come, there might not be encouragement on behalf of the Zani family to actually market the property, in which case it sits vacant, in which case, from a tax standpoint, we continue to get next to nothing. If that easement is present and the Zani family decides to market it, to whoever they decide to market. If the town decides to buy it, fine, you pay a fair price. If a developer decides to, you know, do it, that would be an encouragement, if I'm the owner of that property, to put it in play. If it goes into play, this town benefits from a revenue standpoint, no matter what. If we purchase it for recreation, that's one thing, and now it has economic benefit based on that. If we choose not to and it goes into play commercially, then we've got the tax benefit. So in either direction, doing the right thing here and getting this easement to put this property in its proper focus is, I think, a thing to be considered by town meeting and I would urge us to consider helping that process along.
Vanessa, yes.
As a point of clarification, John, I do want to mention that while, yes, if this property is developed, we will benefit from a tax perspective, but there's also an associated cost, especially if this is a large housing development, and it looks like an enormous property. So the, there's a pro-cons here list, depending on how this gets developed, if the town does realistically have an interest in. So I, from what the public hears, I want to make it clear that it's not just about the tax revenue source. There is an associated cost to us for having god knows how many stories tall building in this location, right? And it isn't, and if it gets developed and all of that land is cleared, there are butters there that would be affected as well. So I want to make sure we're looking at this from a whole.
Well, and I agree, you have to look at the whole picture. The butters are essentially the coyotes, but, you know.
Now.
But beyond that, there's lots of ways to develop. I mean, for obvious reasons, we're very fixed on the fact that there's been a lot of housing development that's gone on, okay? However, you know, it's a highly likely site. If I wanted to develop a commercial property, it's got great highway access and everything else. Commercial property brings along its own set of, you know, expenses, but they're very different for the town too. So to be considered is that where this is, how it could be developed, all of which brings, I think it routes it back to my original suggestion. I mean, if this develops as commercial property, I mean, this board has taken steps to be sure that we're on a path of a split tax rate. If it's developed commercially, then suddenly what happens is there's more potential relief for the homeowners.
Just, and I want to try to wrap this up soon, Barry, yes.
So, I mean, when I read through the appraisal, the highest and best use was really housing, is what, is what, when I read through the appraisal. And not that that's necessarily bad, we need more housing. I think that we can always go back, we, I mean the town, can always put in or go and request an easement. But once the easement is done, we can't take back the easement. So, I mean, I appreciate the work that the Zonies have done in this town and all the contributions that they've made, but there's a lot of things kind of moving in place. If there's no easement and the town looks to try to do that, we can, I mean, there's nothing to say that we're not going to not pay a fair price. But once it has that easement, then it could be marketed to some things that we, you know, that we may or may not have control. It would be, you know, commercial development, great, but the market will, the town of Redding is not going to determine what's going to get built on that land, the market will. And so I think it's something that we should really think carefully about. Now, again, it's not this board that's going to make the decision. Would I vote to sort of put it in front of town meeting for town meeting to have that discussion? You know, more likely so, but right now, I'm not sure how I would feel about that. I think that there's a lot of opportunity there and, and once, you know, once you did, once you give it, it's done. And so I, that's how I want to think about it and, you know.
Yeah.
Procedural question. Is, this is the first time I've seen something like this, especially one of this complexity. Bob, is there the possibility for granting an easement with conditions?
I'm calling out for help in the back row.
Ray?
In general, I would say the answer is yes. Whether you can make those conditions stand up is an ace on the 40B development is another.
So, go ahead.
And wow, I don't want to help you with that. You know, the 40B process is a neat beast unto itself.
Yeah, we learned that.
And I, it's possible that the Housing Appeals Committee has said something to this subject.
So we can't say, oh, you can look at the easement, you can use it for this, but not for that, right? We can't have a usage easement.
Why not?
Can we?
Almost a 40B, it sounds like.
I think in general, you could, again, it's subject to what might be done, well, it might be done in a 40B process that override that. But you can, if you're granting an easement, the easement can specify who may pass over and fulfill our purposes absolutely.
So I, we need to wrap this up because Ray, you need to speak in another minute. So I just, I'd like to, one more.
I think you got a comment here.
Yes. Two comments, okay, please keep them brief.
I'll try. First, the town council is here. I wonder if this whatever 40B, even in its current situation.
situation, with an easement existing, having been granted to someone else other than the town, if maybe that might be sufficient access for a 40B development right now? I'm just saying that as an aside, because someone was saying, hey, if you give this person permission, they're going to put a 40B there. That's supposed to attract the attention, that this request would lead into a 40B right now. But the real issue is.
I don't understand how that would be. You could, you could sell it for a 40B use right now?
Well, there's a roadway there, there's a town-owned roadway.
Yeah, but there's no easement there.
Well, not to the private party. But anyway, that's a side issue. The real issue is that I believe that you could put a warrant out of law that gave a grant of the property to the individuals requested, on terms and conditions approved by the Board of Select. That gives you a second button to the apple.
Oh, okay. But, yeah, okay, more.
The town council can comment on it.
That's really good, Mark Doctor, just a question. Given easement is granted, is it defined only as a nominal B period, if that's the only option, or could there be a different fee associated?
Thank you.
That's up to the, it's up.
It's up to us.
So the reason I ask that is because I think the decision you need to make is more complicated than just put it on the warrant.
Yeah.
Put it on the warrant at X.
Yes. Which is the question I was going to ask, Bob.
Could you ask town council if it has to say a precise amount, or could it be a part of the condition?
I'm sorry.
Bob, just also mentioned to the board that if the board should choose, you do have executive session available for such topics.
That is.
Just to point that out.
Very timely. So I, I, I'd just like to say, two closing, or a few closing words here. I hear what everyone is saying, what the board is saying about turning this into a developed property that would bring in revenue for the town. I also understand that we have traffic problems in town, some I believe have been on Haverhill Street. So, so developing more usage of these roads, there is a cost to that, and we're trying to balance a town that has good development, good economic development, with still maintaining a town feel. So I guess that's all I'll say now, and Bob, thank you for the idea of executive session.
Could we do that next meeting?
Well, yeah, I think we would have to, if we want to get this on the town.
Yeah, and as I say, I scheduled it for the next meeting. By charter, you have two more weeks. This may be an instance where you really want to use it.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether you just have to meet then.
Yeah. And then, could we request Ray to be there with us?
Yes, please.
Right? Want to come to our next meeting?
I was just looking at my calendar.
I saw, I saw.
And maybe we can do, we can do the executive session in the beginning, so Ray doesn't have to sit her all night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
So is the board interested in executive session?
Yes.
I think we just need to be able to discuss our options.
So, so I, let's move on. I will, Bob and I will set it up with Ray.
I would allow the trial.
On the trial, okay, so be it. Thank you. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
And thank you to the gentleman for being so patient with our decisions.
And the Zanis too.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Now, Ray, are you ready to discuss Memorial Park?
Yes. Here, you can sit there if you want, I'll move over. I'll move over. Your two files are here, the second and third ones. I'll go right here. I'll talk to that pen, in case I have anything brilliant to write down. Better introduce yourselves for the audience at home.
Sure. So, most people know me, I'm Ray Meara, so I'm town council. With me is a lawyer from our firm, Brian Bertram, who is going to be working on the town meeting this spring. He also had the pleasure of reviewing these documents that, well, let's just start with the old one first. Sure. Okay, so Memorial Park is the, was the subject of a gift about 100 years ago, made to the town. And all of the relevant documents, that is, the town meeting vote to accept the gift, and the actual deed, contain the information that land shall be improved and maintained as a public park, shall be laid out and ornamented with trees and shrubbery as a place for healthful rest, recreation, and amusement for people of all ages, with proper facilities for such children's sports as can be generally indulged in by them, and tend to their proper development, and furnish them with amusement. Okay, so far, so good. So we're favored that. But, says the next sentence, said land shall not be used as a playground for football, baseball, soccer, and kindred games.
Kindred?
Kindred games. Or any games that are in their nature hazardous, or require fenced enclosures, or tend to draw together crowds of people, or interfere with the quiet enjoyment of those whose homes are in the immediately neighborhood, or what it will do in relation to, oh, we don't need that part. Okay. So, so, that is a, that is a restriction on the gift. The town is not supposed to be using it as a playground for football, baseball, soccer, and kindred games. I'll take that to mean other kinds of games that require fields. Or any games that are in their nature hazardous, I don't really know what games, other than football, that that might refer to. Or require fenced enclosures, or tend to draw together crowds of people, or interfere with the quiet enjoyment of those whose homes are in the immediate neighborhood. Okay, so, that's the restriction. Now, when land is given to the town as a gift with restrictions, it creates what's called a public trust. And that means that the town is legally obligated to honor the conditions of the gift. Unlike a commercial transaction that created restrictions, if they sold the land to the town with those restrictions, then it would be enforceable by someone who has, who is in privity, that is, who's rights derive from whoever sold the property. But because they created a public trust, these restrictions are enforceable only by the Attorney General. Okay, so, in 100 years, lots of things have happened on that property, and the Attorney General has, the various Attorney Generals have distinguished themselves by never taking the slightest interest in what goes on with that property. So that's an important fact to keep in mind. Okay, the second document that we have here is a report of a, is it there?
Yeah, it's right here.
Okay, so, a report that was done by the Memorial Park Use Review Committee in 2004.
That was a select board committee?
It was created by the select board, and they had a variety of people that, lists who's there, who was in. And that committee came up with a couple of recommendations. One, one important one was that, that in order to balance the interests of the various people involved, perhaps what we should do is allow practices to go on at that, on that field, but not actual games. So, school football team practices, okay, football games, not okay. That is a distinction that they were sufficiently doubtful about, that they asked then-town council to pursue a action in court to get that distinction memorialized in some sort of court order. Unfortunately, that bit of litigation was not successful. In order to, so there are two kinds of petitions you can have, and, boy, am I not an estate lawyer. But there's something called a sepree petition, which is a petition to alter the actual conditions of a gift. And then, the other one is called an equitable deviation, which is, does not alter the purposes of the gift, but the means of its implementation. It's a very subtle legal distinction. Thankfully, I have never had to be involved in, in either one. Okay, that said, both of them require the same thing, is that you have to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the court that the, it is impossible to comply. And that's where the lawsuit foundered in.
2005?
I think it was 2007. 2007, okay, in 2007. Because it's really not impossible to comply.
We just want to do something different.
Exactly. Exactly. So, we are left with a sort of uneasy truce, which is, there are, in place, some observed restrictions on the use of that property that don't necessarily correspond exactly with the terms of the gift, but which have been going on for many years without the Attorney General necessarily being concerned about it. So, if you were going to ask me what to do, I would say, the usual practice of these things is, if, as long as the person who's responsible for, for enforcing doesn't seem to mind, you should just carry on until such time as they do. If you say, if the question is, can we now add new uses there to make the deviation, the distinction between what's going on there and what's authorized by the gift even greater, I would caution against that.
Yes.
So, there we are.
So can I ask?
Yes, Barry, go ahead.
So what's prompting this discussion now? I mean, are there, I don't believe there are any requests to sort of expand the uses by some of the groups in town, and, and I don't, and there may be, I don't know, are there complaints about what's being used now, or is this just sort of, we're trying to clean something up, as opposed to someone's trying to do something, or more that we need to make a decision on, or, or there are complaints about the current use? I just need to understand that.
Andy, recommend.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought you were going to speak, in my mind, I had already.
What did I say? I wasn't here in 2004, but I was in '07, so I was familiar slightly with the discussion. At that time, there was both neighborhood resistance and desire to increase. So there was both pieces, which brought the discussion more to the front. In particular, one of the neighbors who was offended by the current use at the time has since moved. And I'm not aware of any requests that continued past the failure in 2007. Not to say the town is always interested in more recreational space generally, but I have not seen, and I tried to catch up to Jenna today, she was out, our recreation administrator, whether there's specific inquiry from a group that wants to use it that can't. I shouldn't think so. Not to say it wouldn't come. If town council had said we could entertain new uses, I dare say you'd get a list.
Right, right.
But just, so basically, there's no decision-making here that we need to.
No, Bill Brown had asked through town meeting an instructional motion for this to be pursued.
John?
Well, I don't think that there's any question that, if there was a thought that we could set aside this restriction, or go forward with an action that you described at the very tail end, there is absolutely no question that there would be, there is pent-up demand to use that space. That space was used for, I would say, at least 50 years, for children to play on it in, in, in baseball practice, softball practice, and, you know, not lacrosse because it hadn't hit town yet, but, you know, that was utilized never as the place to play a game, out of respect for the way that that restriction was put on there. But certainly, I mean, the ability for these teams to have any practice space at all doesn't really exist any longer, since we had one neighbor who decided that he was going to challenge how recreation was allowing that to be used. That space was being used without assignment. In other words, you could go down there, find a little corner, you know, with seven-year-olds, and, you know, throw some plastic bases down and practice, and that's what was going on. I mean, essentially, that's what was going on for decades.
Yeah.
Now, no one has asked, because as a result of the '07, was like, get back in your corners, you can't use it for this. Now, you know, I would say, if you read the first one and the second one, I guess we got to tear down the tennis courts and the basketball courts, because those are fenced in, okay? I'm saying that I respect that you're suggesting let the sleeping dog lie, Ray.
Mm-hmm, that's exactly right.
And that's fine, if that's what we're going to do. But we got to recognize that, you know, we've had certain citizens, and then we had town meeting issue an instructional motion to get to the bottom of this thing.
Yeah.
Now, the bottom is not a place we want to be, okay? And if we get to the bottom of it, and, you know, satisfy the insatiable need that we have for a very small amount of citizens to come to some resolution, then I think we got to start to consider sepree, we got to consider all of the other things that, you know, are involved in this. And I, I hesitate to want to go there, and I get the sleeping dog is, is lying, and that's great, but.
Well, to be clear, that's where they went after, after the 2004 report, and in 2007, that resulted in, in failure.
So this already has been to the court?
Yeah, well, Barry.
Vanessa had a question, I'm sorry.
So, I agree, we have a limited amount of land, and we have a lot of demand for recreational space.
Yep.
However, my concern here is, I don't want to poke the beast, because we do have things there that could potentially extend the original intention of this. So if we push our luck, we may be faced with sacrificing things that we already have.
Well, the beast has been poked.
So, yes, but then we're, it sounds like we're quietly retreated, right? Right. So, you know, I, I feel the pain, I just hesitate to go down this road.
Well, I'm not suggesting we do, I'm just saying, you know, we have acquiesced. I'm just saying, you know, we have acquiesced, not acquiesced, we've followed the instructions of town meeting. And here we are. And, you know...
John, I think, I want to make sure I keep moving along. Vanessa, you've finished?
What's the ask here?
That's what I wanted to ask. That was my question.
Okay. I stole it.
Well, the ask from town meeting is, what is the allowed use?
I think Ray's given us that allowed use.
Ray's given you some guidance.
Yeah.
He read the original.
Yeah. I read it out loud.
What we have here is, is a situation where there's been, there is this public trust that has not been followed for the past 50 years or so.
Probably, when you start looking at the history of it, it seems as though the breaches started almost instantaneously.
Instantaneously.
That is, there are examples of what, of baseball being played on their new playgrounds.
In the 20s.
In the 20s, yes.
So, yeah. And I certainly coached my kids in soccer when they were knee-high to a grasshopper on those fields. So, if they're used for, it's not just baseball, there's also soccer. So, where does that put us, Ray, really? I mean...
Well, for every right there... So, the only enforcement of this provision is by the Attorney General.
Right.
Who I have to think has better things to do with her time.
Yes.
So, I can't tell you that the Attorney General will, you know, never take an interest in this, but I think it seems to me to be a little bit unlikely.
Yeah.
Now, you know, I can't advise you to disregard what the law requires.
Right.
I can just tell you that if you carry on and maintain a low profile, chances are the Attorney General will never take an interest in this. I can tell you that.
Generally, you know, I am very hesitant not to follow a public trust or a law, because there's an likelihood that someone will come after us. I mean, there was a public trust created. However, it was broken about as before, just before the inquiry was tried, so to speak, on this. So, I...
Yeah. Barry, please.
So, I mean, this is not the first time that the town entered into a public trust with a generous family 100 years ago. I mean, we had, actually, not 100 years ago, but I think in the 20s and 30s, a wealthy family donated money to the town for us to build a hospital. Well, clearly, in 2019, we're not going to build a hospital in the town already. However, the trust fund commissioners went to the court to get a side-pray agreement that basically said, what it kind of says is like, what they really meant, you know, in the future is that can we use these other uses, which kind of have the same benefit, without us having to actually build a physical structure of a hospital? And the town went, and we prevailed. And so now, those trust funds help bring the elderly to their doctor's appointments and those kinds of things. It's sort of the same spirit of that. You know, it sounds like the town sort of went and tried that again with this in 2004... Oh, was it 2007? I'm sorry.
Decision...
Right. So, if it went in 2004 and they decided in 2007?
Something like that.
Well, I don't want to tell you that that was on the priority list. And we didn't prevail. So, you know, to try that again, you know, even though there's a need for that, I'm not sure is necessarily a great idea. On the other hand, I do believe that, you know, there are people who are sitting right now, maybe watching this, who are thinking about leaving a sum of money for the town for a public trust. And if we willy-nilly just sort of say, well, thank you, we're really going to do this now, I think that's kind of a violation. I think what you're advising is kind of that middle ground. We can't go back and ask this family from 100 years ago what they really were bent, and would you really want us to do this now? We can't. We just sort of have to interpret and do our best as stewards of that trust, to kind of manage it in a way that maintains that, but at the same time, you know, responds to sort of modern-day kinds of thing. And I think what you're suggesting is probably the best path.
So, the difference between the story you just told about the hospital and this story is that we're not proposing to take the park and use it for something other than a place of health, rest, recreation, amusement. The first sentence is all fine. It's the sentence that the restrictions that we're having trouble with. And, you know, if at some point, an enforcement proceeding were brought against the town by the Attorney General because we've got fenced enclosures, it'd be hard to say we don't. But, you know, as far as a playground for football, baseball, soccer, the idea that we only use it for practice and not for games, you know, maybe we could defend ourselves. The absence of somebody who is really pushing to further restrict what goes on there, it just feels as though you should take into consideration what the Attorney General is likely to do.
Yeah. Sounds like it's found its level.
Bob has a question.
Bob. Barry used a good example I was thinking of, and it was germane at the time when the town considered going for a side-pray on this, because some people involved had been successful in the hospital development trust fund. And they argued, well, what did you really mean back when you gave the gift? What did those words mean then versus what they would mean now? And one of the arguments was, baseball in the 1910s and 20s was done by hooligans. And it's very different today.
I have a picture of them.
Yeah.
A Reddy County.
And the meaning of some of the words that we recognize is quite different 100 years later. And that was the argument. And as you know, it all comes down to what judge you get, and what the interpretation the judge makes. And the hospital one, they agreed that medicine had changed, and that the meaning in 1910 of the word "hospital" could be very different today. So, there was a slightly expanded use. The judge for this one decided to not.
In this case, the judge seemed to be hung up with interfere with the quiet enjoyment of those homes and the immediate neighborhood. And in fact, he held a hearing in which neighbors were asked whether this interferes with their quiet enjoyment.
So, it sounds like...
The Attorney General was invited to participate in this. I don't think they did.
In 2007?
I believe they did.
Yeah.
Ultimately, when there was another protest, the Attorney General didn't support it. That's my memory.
Can you repeat that just a little more loudly for the...
I'm running on memory. I haven't looked at the document myself, but I understand the Attorney General did participate, because they have to be a proceeding and a seat prey petition. And that once the abutting neighbors opposed seat prey, that the Attorney General didn't support it in that proceeding, which is one of the reasons why it sort of fell apart.
And the town did try to pursue the relatives of the gift giver for two years and just couldn't.
Couldn't find it. Yeah.
Andy, tell me.
Yes, yes. And then...
It sounds like what we were tasked with from town meeting was identifying the situation we're in now, the original intent of the gift, and how we propose to move forward. Correct? So, if that's the case, we need to report back at the April town meeting, essentially what Ray has just summarized. And then, if there are any actions that this board plans to take on how to proceed with how we are using the field space, the park now. So, I'll be honest, I don't live in that park town. I don't know how the space is used. Are there things in order to be in compliance with the original gift that we need to do? I'm not sure who I'm addressing that to, but...
I think you'd be addressing a judge.
Can I add on, or sort of hone that question into, what is it being used? What is the park being used for now?
I was, I need to check with recreation formally, but I'm not aware that they scheduled the field, like John said.
I don't think so.
Other than that...
It's just pickup.
You know, it's, I think the tennis courts have some schedule to them. Okay? And they are fenced.
Yeah.
There are basketball courts there.
They are fenced.
No. Look, the demand that was made by town meeting pokes the beast. Okay? I mean, and I'm not suggesting, I'm not, I'm not offering that we should go to court. What I'm saying is, we've got to understand, I mean, the whole purpose of this, you know, we had a handful of citizens who got in front of town meeting and got an instructional motion. Created a lot of work for both of you, and we now have the story. The story is, we've been breaking the rules since 1921. Okay? It was handed to us...
In different ways.
In very different ways at different times, but there has been matches, contests, you know. Okay.
Including the roving bands of hooligans playing baseball on the field, that seems to have been going on.
And, you know, in those days, frankly, I mean, you could look around at these things. There were baseball teams, every town had a team, and they were hooligans. And they would, these guys didn't want there. Okay? I get it. Okay?
But the point is, we need to make a report to town meeting on what we plan to do. So, we know what we've learned. The question is, what are we, or is our board going to do? If there's some amount of scheduling, the facilities are there, we can't... Well, okay, let me take a step back. What if we were to determine that one member of this board would draft a report back to town meeting, and the rest of the board could approve said statement?
Yeah.
Right? Because it needs to come from us. We were tasked with this as a board. But we need to come up with something to put in front of them.
Or is it an option that the board takes no action?
Yeah, Barry, I, that's, I think we have to say something, tell me.
We have to tell them.
But I think taking an action could get us in, you know, saying that the town or the board's selectmen think this should be, this use should be allowed, this use should be allowed. I think we should stay away from that. Rather, could we simply find out what it's used for now, present what you gave us, and say, this is the, this is the public trust, this is what has been happening since 1921, and this, there was a, some court action in 2007 that we did not win, and so now it's used for this. And that's our report.
And then we can also add on top of that, and the board recommends no further activity above and beyond what's being used.
Yes. How does that...
Right. Who's going to do that?
How about Dan? He's not here.
Come on, Ray, you already practically wrote it.
Dan won't be here when we're at town meetings. Sorry, Dan. I forgot he expired.
Yeah. Dan has an expiration.
I'd be happy to write that unless...
You're already doing it.
I'm doing a standard view. Yeah, but it's three paragraphs.
Yeah. And, you know, look, it's just being used pretty much the way that's laid out there.
Yeah, right.
With some notable exceptions.
And I can find out...
I mean, we do flood it, we light it. I mean, there are things we do to it, you know, cause it to be used passively. So, I mean, if the board is, if the board is okay, yes.
I mean, I can do it.
You can do it?
It's fine.
All right. That's great. Is the board okay with Vanessa writing up what it is? Working with town manager to find out what it's used for?
I mean, I'm happy to run it. Not yet.
Yeah. I mean, do we get, I mean, if it's...
And then you're going to pass the board in next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
Don't commit me to next meeting, but yes.
Well, before town meeting.
Before town, it's got to go, yeah, before town meeting.
But the report doesn't have to be done before the war...
Correct.
No, no.
We have until right before town.
Just tell me the wording you want under reports, that's all we need for closing the line.
Actually, it'll just be a report back on the instructional motion on Memorial Park.
Excellent.
Okay.
Great. Ray, thank you very much. Releasing Ray next. Bob, if it's okay with the board, we have the chair of the school committee tonight, Elaine, who is patiently waiting for something we were going to discuss at 9:45. Does anyone object to if we move the signing of the Oakland Road map for the registry of deeds to after the school...
Take it out of motion.
Take my order.
Huh? Let's go. Take it out. Take my order.
Okay. Taking it out of order?
Okay. I'll be right back.
Yep.
Do you want us to take a break, or do you want to start with that?
No. Yeah.
Okay. I'm trying to introduce. Why not take a break? John said to continue.
Oh, he did?
Yes.
Oh. All right.
Yeah, when they reconvene or whatever, yeah.
So, you're going to introduce this?
Yes.
All right. Good.
Okay. So, you have a side, Bob?
We'll wait for John.
John said we should continue with that and how they're about.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So...
Can you pass that piece of paper to Andy?
Right. So, I'd like to, I ask first a little very brief history. You know, there's an opening on the school committee that, or I'm sorry, a school committee member resigned recently, and I asked Bob to give a presentation on the process of what happens after the school committee member resigns. And the first step in that process, Elaine just handed me here, which I will read, thank you very much, Elaine. And welcome to our read.
You can sit up.
You can sit up front.
I was watching the whole previous part.
Get out of your PJs and got dressed at the right time.
So, this is dated January 22, 2019, to Andrew Friedman, chairperson, Reading Select Board RE vacancy on the Reading School Committee. On January 17, 2019, the Reading School Committee voted to authorize the school committee chairperson to inform the select board of the vacancy which occurred on January 7, 2019. This written notification is provided in person to the select board chairperson on January 22. That's today, 2019. Elaine Webb, Chairperson, Reading School Committee. And she has copied the superintendent of schools, John Dory, and the town manager, Bob Lulisher. Thank you very much, Elaine. So, Ray, I'd like to pass this over to Bob. He had agreed to give a brief walkthrough of the process now.
Okay. Thank you. I think I can skip much of it, because Elaine has just chosen a path, so we don't need to wonder if she hadn't.
Can I see this?
Yes. The fact that the school committee has formally notified you, put you now into the position of holding a meeting to determine if you're going to fill it or not. And the town council can help. The statute clearly does use the word "shall."
Yes.
You shall hold a meeting. You shall fill the seat.
Yes.
But as town council will tell you, there's no consequence if you don't fill the seat. So, it's another one of those trust issues, I guess you might boil it down.
Thank you.
The school committee, as I understand it, has not taken any action as to what their desire is, whether you fill a seat or not, presumably if...
I can comment that all of the members certainly feel that it's really not very practical, because by the time we could execute this process, there's one school committee meeting on March 21 that the person would basically be appointed for, and then would not be at the next meeting unless they also were running, had papers and were running election and won.
Yeah.
So, this appointment doesn't meet...
Sorry.
Just I'm trying to keep it to people getting...
So, the school committee certainly can have an opinion, and the select board can acquiesce to the opinion or do whatever the select board wishes. If you were to get together as a committee of two fives, you have a 10. Six votes are required for any action, so there has to be someone from another department. Six votes are required for any action, so there has to be someone from another department. It'd rain split that way. There's a certain amount of time that, now that Elaine has taken the step, that the vacancy would need to be advertised for. Logistically, certainly, it could be February 12th that you could have a joint meeting. I'll have to look at the math to see if you could join the School Committee at one of their existing scheduled meetings sooner than that. I certainly take Elaine's point as the practicality, and just let me get this clear, because it's happened, unfortunately, a couple of times. An appointment made in this order, some people have viewed it as political and an advantage to someone, and if it's an advantage to be on the School Committee, to run for School Committee, perhaps by itself, that's true, there's no advantage on the ballot. You are not listed as an incumbent.
Can you clarify why that is?
Stay long. You were not, you were never elected to the position.
Thank you.
And I know that was a few years back. I forget honestly who left, and I remember that was a surprise.
It's also been, I consulted...
Because you have vacancies like November, December, as opposed to February.
Right. So, I consulted with our MASC field director, and that was one of the scenarios in which sometimes people actually delay their reservations or put a forward date on it to avoid giving the committees the ability to appoint someone post your election. But I, I just want to say, while members individually felt that this is not practical, the only vote that the committee made was just to tell you that there's a vacancy.
Right.
So, I just want to make sure that's...
And I understand the reasons for that.
So, I believe that, you know, Ray, tell me if I'm wrong, that you are obliged to have this joint meeting at this point.
So, to be clear, it's, it kind of looks like a joint meeting.
Okay.
But is a Select Board meeting at which individual members of the School Committee have a right to participate and to vote. So, that's different. So, you don't need a quorum of the School Committee to be present. You just need...
You need one.
You need, you just need six votes. So, however many, however many people are present...
Say, say we need an applicant, too?
Barry, before you ask your question, I just want to specify, just nail you down on one thing.
Good luck.
It says, "We shall," but does it say within what timeframe?
Uh, does it say within what timeframe?
Seven days.
After one week's notice, that's what it says.
Okay.
So, after one week's notice.
Okay, Barry, thank you, sir.
Thanks for noticing me.
So, to be clear, if this were to, if we were to appoint someone to replace Sherry, that wouldn't take that person to the remaining two years of her term. They would have to run in, in a couple of weeks.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I, I know since I've been on the board, I, I've sat in on two of those. One, when we actually appointed Nick, and that was when Julie resigned. And then again, a year or two later, I forget, what was it, last year, that we appointed Sherry. Both of those times were sort of late fall, before you guys got the budget, right? And so, in, both in override years, by the way. And so, you needed the help, right? I mean, well, and you could have gotten by with five, but, you know, you had a budget to deliberate. To my understanding, that even if we do everything by the book, right, advertising, everything like that, by the time that person is appointed and sits, your budget's out of committee already.
Yes, we're going to vote on our budget on January 28th.
And there's only one, and there's only one other meeting, and then that person then has to go out and win on April 2nd, assuming there is someone that actually comes up and wants to do the job.
It is a rigorous process, I think John was pointing out.
So, does this board then have, have to have a meeting, and just to have the meeting, and then at that meeting, we can decide we don't want to fill the position? Or can we just decide right now that given just the impracticality of it, you know, we don't want to fill the position either?
Can I...
So, I, I just, I asked, ask that question, I'd like that answered by somebody.
So, I have a technical question.
Wait, wait, I think, he wants his answer...
Right. Before we jump to the next question.
Okay, so, there is a, there is a multi-volume set of books called Sutherland Statutory Construction that lawyers love to refer to, and in there, in it, it says that the word "shall" has 31 different meanings, depending on how it's used. But, but the most common thing that you see is "shall" like this, where there is no consequence specified if you don't. So, what that means is, if you, if, if the word "shall" in this case means that the only remedy would be for someone who has standing, and I truly don't know who would have standing, but someone who has standing would go to court and get a court order directing you to conduct a vote, at which point it would be already right to make you do it. So, the consequence, so, so, I would never say "shall" means "may," but in this particular circumstance, it's pretty close to "may," because there's no consequence for failure to do it. Doesn't say, "And if you don't do it, then, then the School Committee can pick their own," or "The seat has to remain vacant," or, none of those things are specified in the statute. So, if you, so, so, you're, you certainly can keep in mind that there is no remedy for your failure to do it, and therefore, it's what is considered in the law to be directory. It tells you what you should do, but it's not...
Thank you. My question's answered.
It's not mandatory in the sense of, you know, there are some serious consequences if you, if you didn't do it.
Vanessa, and then John.
So, I appreciate, Ray, you pointing out the technicality of, of the fact that there are no consequences. If my son steals a candy bar and he doesn't get caught, is it still okay? So...
Well, this isn't that. You're not being, it's not a matter of being caught. Whatever you're going to do...
But if we're not called to the table, right? I mean, that's, that's essentially what's happening. We, there is, and, and I appreciate the fact that this is inconvenient, that the timing is unfortunate, that it's a litigious amount of work for what is going to amount to one meeting, two if we're lucky. However, the state law indicates that this is something we are required to do. Simply because there is no consequence does not mean that we should look at it as optional. Because my concern here is that there is probably any number of laws on the books that don't specifically have a consequence. That doesn't mean we have a right to choose which ones we follow.
John?
I think we have to point out that there is a person of standing who has sent us a letter today, a member of the School Committee, asking us to do our duty.
Oh, sorry, yeah, Nick.
I think you can't overlook that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know why...
I think, so, Mr. Bobbin is also an attorney, he's a patent attorney, and yet he's, if you didn't see, I don't know, Ray saw the letter, but it's, that's his personal opinion and interpretation of the law and the word "shall," and I just heard Attorney Mieres say that there's 31 meanings. So, this is certainly, you know, I, I thought...
Elaine, I'm not trying to take a side here, I'm just pointing out.
But I thought that when Mr. Attorney Mieres was talking about a person of standing in the process would be someone who felt that they were potentially treated unfairly by not getting the opportunity to be appointed for one meeting. That was my own assumption of, of his statement of a person of standing. It was certainly, and it would really be one meeting, because I, I would like to say, I understand that it's a meeting of the Select Board, and like, the School Committee members get to participate in that, but I can tell you that in the past, I've been to this process probably five or six times, and in every case, the meeting was scheduled so that the committee members could attend. And I can tell you that the five of us who are currently on the committee would absolutely want to attend any meeting that is going to impact our board. So, it would have to be scheduled to make sure that the committee members could attend.
Barry? So, let's just say we follow through and schedule a meeting, right? And, you know, for the purposes of appointing someone for the...
One meeting.
For, you know, to fill out Sherry's term until Election Day. Okay. So, Ray, am I, is it true, understand that it would take six votes?
It would take six votes.
So, not, 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 not a majority of the people who show up?
That is correct.
So, if we scheduled a meeting and there weren't six people there, then there's not votes? Does it, so, I mean...
It's part of the...
That's...
I mean, no, no, I'm just saying is that, is that there's no...
That feels dirty.
I mean, there's, the practicality of appointing somebody for, for, for one meeting, I think everybody on its face seems that that's not, that's not a wise use of time, whereas people can then go out, take their nomination papers, get on, and get on the ballot, and, and run...
But that's not the question before us.
So, I just, so...
We've got to raise our hands, because the rest things are going to fly.
All right, fine.
I'm sorry to do it, but Vanessa.
So, I don't want to, I don't want to game the system. As far as intentionally scheduling, it's that we don't have members of the School Committee there, or enough of them, or enough people to make a legitimate vote, right? That, that seems insincere. I don't like this any more than anybody else does. It means an additional meeting, a lot of work, and they serve, and we may not even get any applicants. That's the other part of it, right? Who wants to subject themselves to that for one meeting? But that's not the question before us. The question before us is that state law indicates that we need, we shall appoint someone, 31 meetings aside.
And that's what I indicated was, I thought was the best approach.
It's, you know, do we go through this process, or do we choose simply not to act? In which case, perhaps there is someone out there that would want to apply, and then they do sue us. I don't know if that's a risk worth taking.
John, did you want to say something?
I, I really, I understand the challenge, but I agree with what Vanessa's saying. I, you know, look, if somebody's out there and they want to do it, let's accommodate them. And if, and if we, if we call a meeting, look, you can have a party and nobody shows up if that happens. And I'm talking, when I talk about nobody showing up, I'm not talking about the elected members in, that are concerned here, which are certainly the five in the School Committee, and I, I get it, Elaine, you guys would certainly want to be involved. Absolutely, I get that. And we should all show up, too. But, you know, you kind of have to make a decision tonight to go forward with that process, and then see what happens. I mean, we, as I said earlier, nobody has run to the clerk's office to pull papers for this position. As a matter of fact, as I understand it, there are, there will be three positions open on the School Committee, and one set of papers has been pulled so far. Is that true?
Some people have disclosed some things about timing, I believe, but...
I, whatever, I mean, you know...
But yes, I believe there's no...
Whoever's doing what they're doing, they're doing it. I mean, yeah, but I guess what the point is, is that I think we've got an obligation, if there's a citizen out there that would like to apply for this job on an interim basis, to create that platform. And let's see what, let's see if there is such a person.
Could I, could I weigh in here, just to...
Thank you, Bob. You don't have to.
I, I want to address John and Vanessa, because I, I totally understand your point. It says "shall," "shall" means "shall," and evidently, there's no wiggle room on the timeframe. Thank you, Ray. But the, from, from, in working, having worked with the state government for 18 years or so, our laws and regulations have a lot of "shall's." And there are times when, and I can't, I'm not speaking for the state in this case, but there are times when the state just does not pursue every "shall," because it's totally impractical. I'm not saying it's impractical here, but I think, I'd like to just share that with you, and I, I think there is, it does seem a little, more than impractical, it seems like a little bit of a, a big show for a one meeting, and then we have an election. And I'm not, I'm not sure I'm, I'm comfortable engaging in that because of what it would mean. It would appoint somebody to the School Committee for one meeting.
Mr. Chick, can I add? Just another clarifying question.
Yes.
So, let's just say, because we want to follow the letter and the rule of the law, we schedule a meeting, hopefully someone shows up, but let's just say someone shows up. Does that require us to appoint that one person, or does that just require us to listen to that person's reason for why they want to apply, and then we can vote yes or no?
Who are you asking?
I'm asking somebody.
We just have to vote.
Okay. I'm asking, I'm asking the ether.
Bob, no, they have to get six votes.
Bob, you can appoint any registered voter, whether they applied or not. You don't have to appoint someone because they applied.
Consent is not required here?
We can appoint someone, yes, Elaine.
So, I, I have been through the appointment process myself, my very first time on the Committee back in 2003, and I've done it multiple times. I think it's an, actually, it's an excellent process. It's really rigorous. If you want to be appointed, their application is like you're filling out your resume.
Right.
You sit here, it's a public process, it's pretty stressful. So, somebody who wants to be appointed to the Committee is a very serious, and I think it's a, it's a big investment on their part. Whether someone's going to want to go through that for one meeting, that person is ultimately going to have to decide that. I just think also, as with your board, with our board, there's, there's a number of things that either the Chairperson and/or the Superintendent, I assume it's the Chairperson or, or Bob as Town Manager, basically provide to that person to sort of get them up to speed, to get them started. And so, that is a, an amount of resources also that would need to be expended for potentially someone to be on the board for one meeting. I mean, yes, we would do whatever it is we need to do for that person if that was, if that was the decision, but just in terms of the practicality issue of it, it's just another piece of it.
Vanessa said she had a question?
I have a procedural question. Okay. I don't know if this is for Bob or Ray. All right. We have seven days since notification, just means we have to do it today, to decide whether or not we want to post this position, correct? This opening? All right. That's seven days.
No.
No?
No.
We have seven days.
That's not the way it's written.
So, someone, someone clarify that the actual process for when we need to have the meeting to appoint?
We have to have it within 30 days. So, you have a process for filling, for filling all appointment positions, and it involves posting it for...
15 days.
15 days. Okay, it's right in, it's right in the charter. Thank you, Bob. It's right in the charter, yes.
Maybe a couple of water. So, we, we have to post...
You have to post it for 15 days. You also have to give notice at least seven days before when, of the date that, that you're going to take a vote. So, that, that's, that date that you take a vote can't be sooner than 15, 15 days.
Because we have to post it.
Because you have to post it.
Right.
But then, you have, you can't just give the normal 48 hours notice and put it on the agenda. You have, you have to, in fact, give public notice that the vote is going to take place seven days ahead of the meeting.
Seven days? So, that's where the seven day comes in? Is that right?
So, technically, though, we could...
You could still do that on the 18th.
On the 15th day.
We're still within, right?
Right.
But, so we have to post for 15 days, and we have to say, we have to announce it seven days in advance. However, we don't have to necessarily schedule the meeting. Do we have to schedule the meeting when we vote, within a certain timeframe?
You have to schedule the meeting.
Right? So, if, if, at a minimum, we can't, we, we cannot do it any sooner than 16 days, because that's the posting period, right?
It's worked, yeah.
What about the... But the seven can be posted, we can post before we actually, inside the 15 days. Yeah. So, okay, that's, that's the short end, right?
Wait, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I want to make sure I get that.
Yep.
We have to announce the meeting six days prior.
Seven.
Seven days prior. We have to post for two weeks.
You could today, for example...
Yes.
Yes. You could today, for example, say...
But that's the short end.
We're going to take this vote on whatever...
February 12th.
February 12th. You could announce that today. That satisfies the seven-day requirement.
That's right. What's the long end of that? Do we have...
There is no long end.
That's it.
So there's no, we have to appoint within 30 days, or we have to meet in 60?
No. They have to tell us in 30 days that there's a vacancy. And that's been done already. They did their part.
But no, I'm trying to figure out if there's an outer limit yet.
Shut up. Boy, this is a hard one to moderate. Go ahead.
I have a question for Ray. How does the board give seven days' notice except at a posted meeting?
Well, the same way that they give 48 hours' notice.
So it can be done through the chair?
Through the chair.
Okay. Just to make sure.
Don't vote without me.
I won't.
So the chair can decide, this is an agenda item, seven days in advance instead of 48. Trying to make sure.
Anyway, it's...
My, my point was, is there, is there an outer limit? And the answer is no.
No.
All part of the strange and wonderful definition of the word shall.
I mean, so, John, I'm curious what your thoughts are on this, because you and I seem to be aligned generally on the, I mean, I'm torn here, right? So respectfully asked that John and I have a side conversation while there is a way. I'm torn here, right? We have the law as interpreted, right? There's, you know...
Are you asking my opinion?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that this is simply impractical, but I want to make sure that we're not taking liberties with the law. So I'm, you know, you and I seem to be aligned, so I'm curious.
It is, it is impractical, however, I will just tell you how I feel about it. There's several things in play. The first one is that if you read, if you read the law, it makes me think that we're supposed to take action. You know, that's kind of the general tone of it. And that we would take that action in concert with the remaining members of the board, of the school committee.
That's correct.
Okay? So that's, to me, very clear. Then you add in another piece. Look, there is a, there is a currently active member of the school committee who can't be here tonight, who is making a strong case that we do what he perceives us to do our duty. Okay, so we know we've got a person out there of standing, an elected official, that is making that request. My opinion is, we've got a meeting scheduled for the 12th that gives us more than the 15 days that the charter calls for. I think we, I think we've got to err on the side of what it appears the law says to do. We take that action and let those chips fall where they may. I get that it's impractical. I get that it, you know, is a, you know, potentially a one-meeting thing. A person may or may not have even, a person could file for that seat, I think February 12th is the date the papers have to be pulled if you're going to return, right?
13th return.
Okay, so...
Oh, no, 11th, 11th, right, 12th return.
So you, so you see, the impractical nature of this just goes on and on and on. Okay, I mean, it just, it just never stops. But I think you got to take, I think we have to take the action that's laid out. That is the way I will vote.
I'm inclined to agree with John.
Can I?
Yes or no.
I just want to make one comment, and I fully agree that Mr. Bobbin is a member of our committee of standing, and he has his opinion, he put it in writing. I believe that myself, and I know my vice chair, who also couldn't be here tonight, has a, I think we're members of our board in good standing, and we have a different opinion than Mr. Bobbin. So I just, I feel like, I, the board, like the committee's voice was, we have a vacancy.
Yeah.
And again, I just want to say, I know you're talking about the timing of the meeting. I just really want to say that I think it's essential that we do, when we do joint meetings and things, usually we collaborate to make sure that, like, this is a good date for everyone.
Yeah.
And we can make it. So I just, if that's going to happen, I just really want to make sure that...
Yes.
All the committee members can make that date.
Yes.
And that, you know, we have a financial forum coming up.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a...
Yeah, I mean, I think if the board votes to have a joint meeting, we all have to make a good faith effort to pick a day that we can...
It's either one of our meetings or one of yours.
Right.
I mean, that's where you got to leave out half the people there.
Can we?
But just a second. Go ahead.
I mean, I, I think we beat this dead horse. So can we, as a board, come to an agreement on what we're going to do?
I want to say one more thing.
I would, too. I'd like to say one more thing before we close it in.
The question that I have, and I'd like Elaine to hear this, is this. I agree that the law is the law. And I agree that it's impractical. I agree that perhaps we should pursue it anyway. But what's in the best interests of our, of our school kids? For me personally, if we appoint somebody, I would like them to be well-qualified for the job. And what impact will this well-qualified person have in one meeting for the children? Will it be for the better, for the worse? If there's not a qualified candidate, someone with some educational experience, legal experience, or the school committee is probably best equipped to go over the qualifications. But although, I suppose we are, too. I just...
But that's what the meeting would be for. We don't have, just because they apply doesn't mean we have to appoint them.
We just have to...
Yes, right. We're going to talk about the kids.
Vanessa almost stole my thunder, but I'm going to, I'm going to say it anyway.
Sorry.
The, when you get to the meeting, if you, if you decide to have a meeting...
Yes.
Lots of things could happen. You could have no applicants. You could have only unqualified applicants. You could have a multitude of qualified applicants that you can't agree on. All of those things could possibly happen. So when the law says you shall appoint somebody, it's not mandatory in the sense that, by God, you have to sit here until, until you...
Sounds like we get white smoke with the vote.
That's right, yes, that's right. It's not mandatory in that sense.
Right.
If you go through the process and you end up with, with no applicants, or only unsuitable applicants, or you can't agree on, on the applicants, and therefore you, you don't, six people can't vote for it.
Yeah.
That is a perfectly understandable outcome. And it's not like that it would be a violation of the word shall.
John, you wanted to say something?
I did. And that is specifically to you, Elaine. Just because one member has an opinion that differs from yours doesn't, in my mind, discount your opinion at all. The only reason that I'm suggesting that that's a factor for me is that there is in front of us this law, and there is, you know, there's a request by one of your members to fulfill that. Yours is a more practical opinion, in my opinion, and I don't disagree with it, but I feel like, I feel like we have to march through this thing. And I understand where Ray's coming from, and I want to just say to you that I'm not, when I said, what I said, it was not being disrespectful to you or your vice chair about a difference of opinion. It was simply, it's, it's form over substance for me.
I also, I hope I didn't offend the board by saying the school committee is the most qualified to determine if they're going to disqualify. Obviously, we're not stupid either.
Some of the process allows for us to participate.
I think we need to get to a motion.
So do we, Bob, point of clarification, do we need a motion to proceed with the appointment? I think we can just agree to scheduling.
You need to let staff know whether we want to post the vacancy, certainly.
So...
I think that's probably all the thing, you know...
Okay, so we don't need to...
Are we in agreement that we need to post the vacancy? And John and I have been very clear on where we sit on that deal, Vanessa. Eric?
I, I think it's a charade, but that's the law, that's the law.
Andy?
I don't think it's a charade. I'm angry with you and John for arguing well. And, and that I wasn't able to argue better.
It's better relective, yes.
That is a relective, yes.
Okay. So I think, Bob, is this sufficient instruction for you?
Yeah.
Okay. And thank you, Ray, for your...
And I will inquire with the school committee members as to their availability. And the same with you, I'll just list out a lot of dates. Both of you are scheduled to meet, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Elaine.
Thanks, Ray. Thanks to the board for, we spent a lot of time on it, but I think...
Continue to spend more time on it.
We will, but I think it's, it was time well spent. We were going to miss, well, everyone had to be heard, Barry. So we, we, we're, I think we've blown past everything. And Bob, does the paper map...
Does not need any motions. If the board wants me to discuss it, I'm happy to. I wrote up in your packet an overview and...
I read it.
...town meeting information.
And I don't have...
All you need to do is sign that. Again, no votes required.
I don't have any questions.
Do we have to use black pen, right?
Pen's coming with it. Please don't mess it up.
And as we sign, can I move on to the minutes?
Certainly.
The agenda only had it going over this December 11th, 2018.
There were two sets in there.
There's two sets in there.
But only one is on the agenda.
And I didn't review the second set because I...
They're in your packet.
I know.
Okay.
But I go by the agenda, and I'm not sure...
Um, yes. Selection, upper date, right, right here, right? Do you want, is it today's date?
Yeah, today's date. Yeah, that's it.
So these slides right here.
So this is January 22nd?
Yes.
Correct.
What page of the minutes, Tony?
Uh, I don't know.
PDM.
6A1, I think.
Yeah, but like what page on that?
Oh, okay. I can do that.
Oh, wait, I can do that.
185? No, 184.
So are we doing 18, or are we doing...
We're doing the one that's on the agenda, which is 1211.
Okay. Are we doing that right now?
Yes.
So on the first one, page one...
Yes.
We, on liaison reports, Mr. Friedman let the board know that Elaine Webb and Mark Docser will be joining the ad hoc. It's actually Linda Snow Docser.
And I, and I, yeah.
That's what happens when you don't show up to a meeting. You get, yeah.
Right, right. I thought that...
Linda Snow Docser.
I didn't have a chance to review the tape there, but that was, I believe you reported that because it's your subcommittee, and Vanessa's subcommittee.
I don't...
I don't, I don't remember reporting that because I don't...
I can go back and check.
The tape, yeah, I had trouble finding the tape.
This one's hidden. For some reason, it doesn't show up.
I found it, I got it, yeah. Same here.
Is that the 11th?
Yeah.
It doesn't show up with the regular ones, but it is on there, but I haven't figured out exactly where, but I have a link that it's...
That's what I had to do, too.
Can you send the board that link so we all have it?
For the video?
Yeah, the video. I, I mean, we're going to approve the minutes, I think. So I had the same comment.
Yep.
But if you want to put my name instead of yours, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think I said it, because it's, I'm not on the subcommittee.
Yeah, but like usually there's all, usually some of us, I mean, usually all of us have something to say on this, but whatever. But just to be clear that, you know, while it's a publicly meeting, and Mr. Docser can't attend, he won't be sitting at the table with his wife.
Um, so, yes.
I only had one minor edit, which is 6A4, my name is spelled.
Oh, okay.
Small update is...
I have something on 6A2?
Third paragraph from the bottom, by the way.
Do you have that extra?
Yep. There's a lot of them. That's all I had.
All right. Well, actually, did we actually even make a motion to...
Did you have something else to add?
Yeah, I did.
A motion to approve the minutes of December 11th, 2018, 7/2.
Barry, you want a second?
Second.
Second, okay. So now we're in discussion. So on the, on page 6A2, just after the sentence that said Eric Burkhart called the finance committee to order, the next paragraph, the second sentence that starts with, without anyone seemingly agreeing, I'd like to replace it with a more micro, Mr. Friedman expressed a desire to continue discussing the motion at the next meeting in order to be able to get to other items on the evening's agenda. And then the description of the, of the motion and the, and the vote is a little different from the, from the typical way we do it. I think the typical way we write it is, Mr. Friedman made a motion to postpone future discussion until January 8. The motion was seconded by Ms. Alvarado. And then, instead of starting off with half the board seemingly wanted to keep hashing it out, just replace that with a simple, Mr. Friedman made a motion, actually this replaces the, continues off of the sentence I just said, the motion was seconded by Ms. Alvarado. And then finally, the board voted 3 to 2 with Ensminger and Halsey opposing.
Actually, the other thing, too, in going forward, I don't think we want to use the word "half the board" because that means like there's two and a half of us.
Yes, yes.
And which half?
We don't hash things out ever, right? So here...
Do you have it written for her?
I do, I do.
Okay.
Anything else?
We can debate.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Okay.
Yes.
Can I sign that after we adjourn, Bob?
Sure.
Okay. Would, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this point?
Motion to adjourn.
And we'll delay the discussion if select board goes until next time.
Agreed.
Okay? It's just too late. Okay.
Do I have to sign that thing?
Yeah, we will, too.
I agree if you do.
All in favor? All right. Thanks.